Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow! Woo!
Thank you very much. That was beautiful.
Thank you, my Robinson team.
In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on January 26, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Hines, seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, and that motion is agreed to. I have a few announcements tonight. We have postponed the McLean naming rights item and taken it off tonight's agenda to give the Board an opportunity to have further discussion on policy issues. We do want to thank very much all of those McLean parents and supporters who came out tonight, and thank all of those also who sent us many emails on this issue. We appreciate your advocacy. We also want to make sure that we thank FHFOR for their willingness to partner with us to help us meet the needs of our schools. Postponing the item will allow the Board members to have further discussion about the policy going forward. While it won't be on the agenda tonight, we're still happy to hear from those speakers who signed up to testify about the item, and we welcome additional input on the naming policy that underpins the proposal as the Board continues its discussion on this policy. And I believe Mrs. Strauss wanted to make a couple of comments as well.
I too wanted to personally thank the McLean community. I'm very proud of your advocacy, and it is important that our schools, our parents, and our faculty come to the Board to let us know of your needs as you search for a solution to your problems. So, thank you very much. We welcome your voice. We welcome your input on this issue, and obviously, the Board is going to discuss the policy further. So, thank you very much. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, that information is on the table at the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Ms. Chu is not with us tonight, so I would ask if there are any Boy Scouts in the audience that we could recognize? Any Boy Scouts, so please stand up and let us know what troop you're from and what badge you're working on, if you're working on a badge. Excellent. I'm going to call on Mrs. Huff for recognition of National Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you. As the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee liaison, I am excited for this opportunity. Career and Technical Education, or CTE, month is a public awareness campaign held every February to celebrate CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the country. This year's theme, "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow," raises awareness of the innovation and excellence that exists in our CTE programs, as well as the crucial role that CTE plays in readying our students for careers and our nation for economic success. Career and Technical Education prepares both youth and adults for a wide range of careers, from nurse to computer technician. These careers may require varying levels of education, from high school to post-secondary certificates to two- and four-year college degrees. The subject areas most commonly associated with career and technical education are business and information technology, programming, business management information technology, trade and industrial, skilled trades such as automotive technician, carpenter, cosmetologist, law enforcement, health and medical sciences, nursing, dental, and emergency medical technicians, family and consumer sciences, culinary arts, child development, education, marketing, sales, entrepreneurship, and technology education, electronics, engineering. Career and Technical Education is offered in middle schools, high schools, two-year community and technical colleges, and other post-secondary schools. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 18 of the 20 fastest-growing occupations within the next decade will require career and technical education. At this time, I would like to invite the CTE staff and the audience to join me at
If I could have everybody come in and fill in on the risers, please?[496.75][496.75](laughter) If I could grab a couple more people in the front, please?[537.12][537.12](laughter) We're going to need to come in a little tighter, please? You can fill in in the front?[544.01][544.01](laughter) So, we're going to be taking two pictures right from here. Just give me a nice big smile for one. Two, and one more. Thank you so much. All right. For those of you watching at home, you'll notice we're taking one step back, but that's all right. I'm going to call on Mr. Moon for an announcement.
Madam Chair, in the absence of Student Representative Laura Chu, it is my pleasure to read this recognition. I hope this is not a one-step-back recognition.
No, it's a one-step-forward.
One-step-forward recognition. African-American History Month, February 2017. Originally established as a Negro History Week in 1926 by Dr. Carl G. Wilson, a noted African-American author and scholar, this event evolved into establishment in 1976 of February as a Black History Month. The commemoration has increasingly been referred to as African-American History Month, although both names are currently in use. When Dr. Carl G. Wilson established Negro History Week, he realized the importance of providing a theme to focus the attention of the public. The intention has never been to dictate or limit the exploration of the Black experience, but to bring to the public attention important developments that merit emphasis. This year's theme, "The Crisis in Black Education," focuses on the crucial role of education in the history of African-Americans. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I now call on Mr. McElveen for recognition of National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. National School Counseling Week 2017, entitled "School Counseling: Helping Students Realize Their Potential," will be celebrated from February 6 to 10 to focus public attention on the unique contribution of school counselors within United States school systems. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by ASCA, highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first full week in February. Fairfax County Public Schools employs over 600 school counseling professionals, including school counselors, directors of student services, and career center specialists. These professionals are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members in a global society. At this time, I would like to invite staff from the Office of Counseling, College, and
Okay, ready? Four, two. You're going to have to give me a nice big smile here. One, and two. Perfect. Next is Item 3.01, Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in the attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak tonight. Our first speaker is Bonnie Vona, to be followed by Ellen Woods, to be followed by Jeffrey Grams. If speakers would come down and be prepared to speak, we would appreciate it.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight on the agenda topic of Strategies for Goal One, Student Success. As a parent and grandparent, I fully support a nurturing environment, and certainly, of course, the school is the place, as per Strategy Four, to provide students with relevant opportunities to explore options and prepare for college and a career. My question is, how is that cause furthered by promoting gender dysphoric children to take a lifetime of harmful chemicals, to subject their bodies to surgical removal of vital body parts resulting in permanent sterility, especially when those kids may be temporarily sexually confused? Does anyone here not know a teenager that has not been confused in their teenage years? This agenda is even more disturbing when medical studies show that nine out of 10 of these students grow out of gender dysphoria if they're given a nurturing and supportive environment and not immediately subjected to the pressure of this new Fairfax County school agenda, which callously promotes drug distribution and irreversible surgeries that students may regret in the future when they wish to have children. Other strategies that you are implementing that don't support Strategy Four, Preparation for College/Career, instead, they create a hostile, disturbing environment. For example, secretly allowing males into a female bathroom while opposing parents' knowledge and consent, I'm sorry, without opposing parents' knowledge and consent, can be terrifying. Imagine a young female student who is a victim of assault. And by the way, if you think that's not a big deal here, national statistics show that one out of six girls have been assaulted. So, with 90,000-plus female students, that translates to over 10,000 victims in the Fairfax City schools, and they're being subjected to a male in their locker room or shower. The trauma that she may experience with this could easily, that she suffered in the past, could easily be re-triggered, resulting in depression and even suicide. I myself have a friend who, at age, in the mid-20s, was assaulted by someone that she knew, and it took her 20 years to be touched by a man without jumping. Certainly, this is something that every woman can identify with. You aren't providing students with the nurturing Strategy Three environment when contrary to the contrary, you are punishing students with suspension, as outlined in your current Fairfax County County Student Handbook, for using the improper pronoun for over 60 different sexes or gender identifications. In other words, a child can be kicked out of school for saying, "Hey, you guys!" Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ellen Woods, to be followed by Jeffrey Grams.
I would like to talk about Strategy Three, and specifically, the Action Plan, Design Family Engagement Strategies with Support from the Community and Cultural Organizations. The goal of preparing children to enter kindergarten requires the support and engagement of families, the engagement you appear to be avoiding when it comes to Policy 1450. Implementing Policy 1450 discriminates against children that you are responsible to protect, and it violates many of their cultural and religious beliefs while undermining the influence of their parents. At the Board meeting on January 12, 2016, Lake Anne Elementary was honored with a resolution. It touted, "The school had students from 70 different countries and speak 38 different languages. I am sure that some of those students are the ones that you will choose to discriminate against by violating their cultural or religious beliefs by implementing this policy. This will not contribute to school success or the goal of diversity. Parents prepare children to enter school and invest both financially and emotionally in their success throughout their school years. Coping skills and emotional maturity are very important to school success, and ultimately success as an adult. Whether parents are being undermined or intentionally disempowered, it will result in a weakened support system. The developing brain does not function the same way as a fully mature brain when making decisions or sorting through confusing or contradictory belief systems. My experience in working with young foster children who have been exposed to confusing, inconsistent social messages, or an overly sexualized environment has revealed they do not achieve academic success when they do not feel safe and cannot predict the behavior of others. Having to utilize co-ed bathrooms or locker rooms would be extremely stressful to an adult, but even more so to a physically developing young person. This policy ignores other special needs, such as children who may come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds or have a history of known or unknown sexual abuse. These children are typically not resilient and do not need another hurdle. Stress makes it difficult to concentrate in class, also makes it, leading to aggressive behavior, depression, drug abuse, and suicide, not to mention a whole host of a new class of lawsuits that are financially costly and impact the reputation of the schools and ultimately impact home values, a very slippery slope. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer in Fairfax. We all know that quality schools drive up home values. Parents are looking for schools with a strong focus on student success, not ones embroiled in controversial issues. Please focus on what parents have entrusted you to do, help their children achieve academic success."
Thank you. We next have Jeffrey Grams, to be followed by Greg Miller, to be followed by Deborah Hamer.
Hello. My name is Jeff Grams. I've been on the McLean High School Athletic Booster Board for the past four years. I served as the Booster Club President in the three years prior to this one. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to provide some further insight on the naming rights agreement. Given the change of plans we received three hours ago, I'm deviating a bit from the prepared statement I submitted yesterday. We started this process in the spring of 2015. In the last year and a half, we have met with and garnered the support of Dr. Karen Garza and Bill Curran. The campaign has truly been a grassroots effort. Glenn Goldenhorn and other members of our corporate sponsorship committee have spent in excess of 1,000 volunteer hours last year cultivating our corporate sponsorship program, and specifically, our relationship with FHFOR. I was prepared to tell you how FHFOR is an incredibly well-respected company in the Northern Virginia region, but I think you already know that. Based on information we've gathered, the $250,000, 10-year naming rights price that's on the table for a high school stadium is more than a fair market value, based on comparables, including Stonebridge High School in Loudoun County. Bottom line is, McLean High School needs three new scoreboards. The current scoreboards are almost 30 years old, and there's no replacement parts that exist anymore. The estimate that we received from Dectronics, the sole FCPS scoreboard provider, and from FCPS for the installation of the scoreboards exceeds $200,000. McLean High School was renovated in the year 2000. More recent FCPS high school renovations have included a scoreboard replacement. Unfortunately for us, ours did not. It is our intention to use the $25,000 per year donation from FHFOR to address the scoreboards issue, as well as the number of other upgrades needed at the 60-year-old school. McLean High School Athletic Boosters raised $45,000 each year just to stay above water. We must raise that amount. This includes $30,000 per year to the McLean High School Director of Student Activities office to cover the deficit in their annual budget, and $15,000 per year to the FCPS-required turf maintenance fund. Similar to other high schools, we raise funds through membership drives, spirit wear sales, snack bar sales, sponsorships, and other fundraising activities like our annual Holiday Bazaar and golf tournament. It's a real struggle and a very time-consuming effort by a number of volunteers just to raise this amount. Raising additional funds for large capital expenditures like scoreboards is too much to bear without the infusion of a large donation. FCPS Regulation 3860 stipulates, "Subject to available funds, the scoreboard," excuse me, "the School Board shall provide and maintain the facilities required in conducting the interscholastic activity program. Per this regulation, if you elect not to vote yes for the agreement, I urge you to include additional funding for the McLean High School scoreboards in next year's annual budget." On behalf of the McLean High School community, when you do vote on this issue, please consider voting yes to this naming rights opportunity. We would be so very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Miller, to be followed by Deborah Hamer, to be followed by Glenn Goldenhorn.
Hello. My name is Greg Miller, and I am in my first year as the Director of Student Activities at McLean High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. As the Director of Student Activities, my number-one priority is to help provide the best possible experience for our students. The cost associated with providing this experience do not come cheap. It is not widely known that the large majority of the money we use for athletics comes from ticket sales at our games. FCPS pays for game officials, coaching stipends, and transportation, but outside of that, the schools are responsible to come up with the money to pay for most of our athletic needs. I would estimate that running athletic program is approximately $95,000 a year in expenses. Last year at McLean, we earned $65,000 in ticket sales, leaving us with a $30,000 gap. This financial gap is supported by the hard work of our boosters club and through relationships we build with local businesses. The money from ticket sales and the booster club has gone to providing what is needed to keep our student athletes safe and necessary to play their specific sports. At McLean, we have the opportunity to further enhance a current partnership with a reputable local business, FHFOR. FHFOR has taken the extraordinary measure of offering to contribute McLean $25,000 a year for 10 years for naming rights to our stadium field. These resources would enable McLean to purchase three scoreboards that we desperately need. This opportunity does not have to be unique to McLean or create inequity with other schools. Last year, I was the DSA at Mount Vernon. There, I was able to build relationships with business owners and help raise more than $25,000 for our athletic programs. I am confident that Mount Vernon can obtain a comparable partnership to the one we are advocating for tonight. In fact, I've spoken with their DSA, and he also feels confident that a local business would be eager to support Mount Vernon High School in a similar fashion, and is rooting for this agreement to pass. Turning away our donor at McLean doesn't hurt just us, it would hurt Mount Vernon, South Lakes, Thomas Jefferson, and other FCPS schools. In August, during my first couple of weeks at McLean, I spoke to each fall sports team to introduce myself to our athletes. At the end, I asked them to come see me with any concerns they had about our athletic programs or provide ideas on how we can improve our facilities. Every student who came to speak to me expressed their concern with our aging scoreboards. This is a valid concern, considering our scoreboards were installed in 1989, they are outdated and run down. Truthfully, I hold my breath every Friday night football game, hoping the scoreboard will function for four full quarters. We're not looking to have the best scoreboard in FCPS. We simply want a scoreboard that was made in the 21st century. Studies show that students who participate in athletics are more likely to receive higher grades, higher test scores, are more likely to go to college, and will have more self-esteem. Believe it or not, some kids make decisions on whether or not to play sports based on the way uniform looks or the aesthetics of their stadium. Replacing these scoreboards will garner excitement about our stadium and our athletic department, but it also may encourage students who are currently not participating in sports to do so. Please consider voting yes to the naming rights opportunity, so McLean High School can provide a facility that builds pride, enthusiasm, and a positive school climate for our students, coaches, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Hamer, to be followed by Glenn Goldenhorn, to be followed by John Murray.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Hamer, and I'm the mother of three children in the Fairfax County Public Schools, two of which are girls. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns, as I'd like to address the topic on tonight's agenda, Strategies for Achieving Student Success. In particular, Strategy Number Three states that you want to align pre-kindergarten activities better to prepare students at school. I agree with this strategy. However, remember that the statistical vast majority of those attending pre-K are those with special needs from with special needs from disadvantaged homes or single-parent or dual-income-earning families that work very hard to live in this area for the purpose of getting quality education for their children. It is a crying shame when those parents or caretakers learn that their ethnic or moral values are the proven healthiest and most financially successful ways for K-12 to conduct themselves are being undermined in deceitful, unlawful ways as well as being put in unsafe environments. Basically, school-sponsored sexual harassment and illegal, non-consented radical sexual social experimentation on kids. These parents don't have time to screen it or fight against it, and now find themselves as victims of political partisan discrimination against the disadvantaged. It is so extremely frustrating for parents who learn that the school board and school administrators are increasingly implementing controversial policies and introducing harmful and discerning material curriculum and concepts that directly contradict the parent's guidance and instruction. Nowhere is this better illustrated than the unfair, unjust, and harmful Policy 1450 in 2015, which was hastily approved by the school board in two weeks without widespread notification and solicitation of parental feedback and a comprehensive impact analysis on a wide range of issues. Or when English literature without parental notification contains sexually explicit material or language so raunchy it should not be repeated at school board meetings or even on the general assembly floor. It certainly supersedes student rules of conduct as found in the SRNR handbook. How does such lack of parental involvement or the teaching of alternative lifestyles bring success to students at any age, especially at the disadvantaged pre-K kids that don't have parents to screen the filth? It is with this that I ask you to repair the broken trust and create meaningful strategies for achieving student success by repealing the ill-conceived and illegal Policy 1450 and to realign with the guidelines and instructions parents install at homes, and focus on the fundamentals and education that all students need to succeed in life. If you are willing to recognize and implement the needs and rights of all parents, then it is advised that you resign from your position.
Thank you. We next have Glenn Goldenhorn, to be followed by John Murray, to be followed by Mary Beth Stile.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak with you today. My name is Glenn Goldenhorn. I was informed that the agenda was going to be switched out, and it pretty much nullifies my comments, but there are a few remarks I'd like to make. I was lucky, first of all, please let my testimony not serve as an indictment to my son, a senior at McLean High School who is graduating in June and going off to college. On quick points, the FH Fur, McLean High School Booster Partnership is parent-generated. It differs from a monopole when a company from out of town says, "I need some real estate to perform a function." In that case, funds are generated, and the school board should, considering your governance, that kind of fundraising and that kind of split. I put 1,000 hours. I am a part-time worker, a full-time, single parent, raising my boy from second grade. I love the kids, I love the boy, the team. I'm sorry he lost his mother, and I'm passionate about this child's success and every student at McLean High School. I put in the effort. I'm not a professional salesman. I am a volunteer parent who put 11 corporate sponsors together for $2,500 deals for one to three years, and was able to uplift the Activities Department headlined by the FH Fur Company prior to their April 22 donation. And there was a quarter of a million dollars tonight sitting on the floor, and we worry about a money grab, a governance. I go on a highway, it's 65 miles an hour, but I promise that somewhere along the trip there's going to be a new speed sign, and I have to adjust my trip. The FH Fur, McLean High School Partnership is booster-generated. It was done in accordance with the existing governance and good faith, as validated by our school board member, the central officer, your legal team, and Dr. Karen Garza. FH Fur meets all the criteria of the governance at hand, and to minimize the resolution package that the Division Superintendent passed on to you is not only a missed opportunity for us, but every school in this county in the future. To pull the rug out from under us because of governance not yet in place would be a grave injustice. There's a reason why the Division Superintendent sent the resolution package on to you at this time. It was because the time is right for the corporate naming rights for Fairfax County and McLean High School, and that McLean High School has been passed over for the last 20 years. Remodeling work that should have taken place in 1999, 2000, and 2001, those scoreboards needed to be replaced. They were installed in 1989. We can't get a leg up, we can't get them fixed, we need a major infusion of money. The, you were right in your governance meeting back in July, and your board meeting back in September, that the fundraising requirements of high schools differ from middle school and elementary schools. We'll talk later, and heartfelt thank, I'm sorry for the emotion, the utmost respect for you, the entire board and the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, John Murray, to be followed by Mary Beth Stile, to be followed by Eric Klanderman. Mr. Murray? All right, we'll call his name in a bit. Mary Beth Stile.
Your goal of committing to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and in life with the strategy of providing students with relevant opportunities to explore options and prepare for college and career is laudable, but it is divorced from the reality of the policies, curricula, and programs that this board has passed. Parents, employers, and concerned adults watch in horror as young adults come out of Fairfax and other public schools across the country, ill-prepared to survive outside the cocoon of safe spaces. Your emotional health curricula, your silly emotional revolution programming, policies that punish critical thinking by enforcing a strict political correctness, masquerading as tolerance, and teaching the utter nonsensical ideological dogma has created a generation of young people who are incoherent, emotional wrecks, who cannot get through the day without antidepressant and anti-anxiety medication. The school board has adopted a politically-driven notion that gender is defined by feelings and not biology, that can only make sense to people in the educational establishment who have spent years doing mental gymnastics and linguistic manipulation. Spend a few minutes with fourth graders, they're laughing at you. You can bully them all you want to carry your lines while in school, but they know that a boy cannot be a girl and a girl cannot be a boy just because they feel that way. But by 12th grade, the constant drumbeat and ostracism for asking questions and talent and challenging your propaganda has taught them they can't trust their own critical thinking. The damage you are doing is not just on this topic, you're undermining the credibility and teaching authority of your whole system. Why would students trust anything else you teach them? Most developmentally healthy kids will ignore this stupidity. Parents today spend a good time, good deal of time undoing the damage being done in school. That's why homeschooling is so popular. Teaching it right the first time is easier and less time-consuming than unteaching nonsense. As a social worker, I am worried about the fragile child who's conflicted because his personality type does not, does not match your socially acceptable definition of his or her gender. Curricula that teaches gender is defined by emotional traits rather than biology, and each person defines his gender based on those traits rather than his body is creating mass confusion. Surely you know that the cognitive stage of children is concrete thinking. It is tragic that in this progressive era, we do not have the tolerance that we had when I was growing up. We didn't have to go along with every societal stereotype in order to be regarded as the same gender as our body. We could live in the body that God gave us. Tomboys were still girls, and sensitive boys were boys. This social promotion that you are doing, when you collude with the denial of the problem of a disturbed child until he is passed out of the system, has got to stop. If you're concerned about reaching the goals you say, you need to change your policies, curricula, and programs.
Thank you. Eric Klanderman, to be followed by George Alber.
My name is Eric Klanderman, and I am a taxpayer and concerned citizen. I'm here tonight to talk on the agenda item Strategies for Achieving Student Success. This seems an oxymoron, we use school board to create policies that allow males into female bathrooms, showers, and locker rooms, and have complete disregard for the safety, privacy, and dignity of students, who may object for many different reasons, including survivors of female rape and sexual assault, special needs students, religious observers, and people who may object on the basis of science, health, and personal modesty. Instead of promoting a healthy learning environment, you are promoting a harmful and hostile one by creating numerous new problems in highly controversial and divisive areas, mire in misinformation and fraud, including the nonsense that two sexes, male and female, which are determined by irreversible chromosomes at the time of conception, can change, or that there is an elastic number of genders, or the absurdity that people are born into the wrong body. The fact that a school board would make it their business to encourage and promote giving chemicals to children to stunt their normal growth and development, or advocate the surgical removal of vital body parts and causing permanent sterility is mind-boggling ethics. More so when it is reported that 85% of them are said to grow out of their gender dysphoria by adulthood, if just nurtured and supported through their difficult struggle. And how are you preparing people to be successful in the real world, as Clayton's Strategy Four, when you are promoting false realities through false science and completely disregarding any consideration for other medical, health, and safety opinions and testimonies? Rather, you're cultivating an environment where the notion that feelings may be substituted for rational thought and override biological realities is entirely regressive, not progressive. And as part of your successive strategy for students to ram through controversial material in two weeks after giving little to no public notification or involvement in the decision-making process. The only thing that may be saving the school board from being run out of town with a pitchfork is an overwhelming majority of parents do not know what you are doing because they are working such long, hard hours and have trusted their children into your hands. That hard is the well-being, safety, and health of children, but you, in your wisdom, rush through and approve controversial policy and materials without giving any consideration to the potential harmful impacts and considerations to the 99.9% of the student population that is healthy and normal, that are here to learn so as to be successful in life, not to be treated as sub-humans in a mad experiment wrought with numerous risks for the young impressionable children. In summary, it is hopeful that you, as a school board, will listen to the concerned public and adopt real strategies for achieving student success that help them succeed in life instead of teaching them to constantly feel good. Thank you.
Thank you. George Alber.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all about Strategic Plan Goal One. My name is George Alber. I've lived in Fairfax County for just over 20 years now. As a responsible citizen, I try to do my part to help our county and our community in various ways. You know, Martin Luther King once said, "If I cannot do great things, then I will do small things greatly." And so I volunteer, and I serve in various ways. As a Commissioner on the Fairfax County Human Rights Commission, as a founding member of the Fairfax County Communities of Trust Committee, which focuses on trying to improve the relationship between our communities and our law enforcement and other public safety organizations, and is a member of the Executive Committee of the Fairfax County and the Boy CP. However, tonight, I want to speak to you as an individual, a person who, like each of you, cares deeply about the quality and the equity of our education for all of our students. And so I support the four goals of your strategic plan, our strategic plan, including the first, student success. We commit, as you wrote and as you agreed, to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and in life. I'm preaching to the choir, I know. My message is short and simple. I know that you and our community are facing another challenging budget year. However, we should not balance the budget on the backbone of our naivete students. We need to continue to invest in order to show progress on equity issues, including closing the achievement gap. We cannot save money by cutting dollars for positions and programs in these important areas. I urge you to continue your commitment to desired outcome two, which simply reads, in part, "Achievement gaps, achievement gaps will be eliminated." Please do not lose, please do not lessen your focus and investment on issues of equity, access, and achievement for Black and Hispanic students, for all students, as we struggle to meet our budget challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. We next have item 3.02, Strategic Plan Goals, Student Success Strategies Three and Four, and I call on Dr. Lockard for the presentation. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, Chairman Evans. Joining us this evening is our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Francis Ceteron. He and his team will be presenting Strategic Plan Goal One, Student Success Strategies Three and Four. As you're aware, overarching Strategy Three aims to provide early childhood experiences aligned with a portrait of a graduate outcomes that are designed to prepare students to successfully enter kindergarten. And overarching Strategy Four aims to provide students with relevant opportunities to explore options and prepare for college and career. We're excited to have the team here for the sort of second round, if you will, of Goal One, but before we get started, we have a video, a short video highlight of the goals, overarching strategies, Three and Four of student success. So we'll go ahead and show that now.
I want to be a dentist. I want to be a police officer.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
A teacher, just like me?
We are here to support students from the time they first enter our buildings through the time that they walk across the stage of graduation.
We have to invest now, but the benefits increase as children move through FCPS.
I'm going to work really hard and never give up.
It is critical to us that we give the students the skills they need to be successful, not only throughout their time in FCPS, but to really prepare for what comes next, and to give them the opportunity to pursue their passion.
Children who attend our pre-K programs actually enter kindergarten with better literacy skills. They also need less ESOL services and need less special education services. We have an early head start program, and then we have a pre-K program for three and four-year-olds, and they're funded through a variety of grants. When we intervene early and we help support that brain development, we see down the road that we are actually closing the achievement gap.
We did a lot of things that would help someone going into kindergarten, like, it wasn't just coloring and like, sitting in a corner playing with toys, like, there was actual activities we had to do, and it kind of helped me get a feel for what school was going to be like.
It's so important that we all understand that there's not one path to success. Students can create their own path based on what truly connects to them and what they're passionate about, and find ways to make steps towards their next step after they leave our, our schools.
I know I want to go into nursing or helping people that area, so I took sports medicine because I might also want to do athletic training, so I was able to take a class to know kind of what it was all about.
We have a path for every student in our division, and there is something here that can connect with each student's strengths and interests, and also help prepare each student for what comes after high school.
When I get to college, I'm going to know the course load, the work level, the work ethic you need, like, I'm going to know how to handle things better because I already have that training from when I was in high school.
It's critical that we are preparing our students for the careers that exist now and the workforce demands that we have in specific fields, but also to truly give them those portrait of the graduate skills and knowledge so that they can be prepared for the careers of the future that don't even exist yet.
The things I'm offered here, it's just full of opportunity that I might not have if I was in another county.
Good evening, board members. You saw some of our stars in the video that are here with me tonight, Jen Glazer and Maura Burke from Early Childhood and Counseling and College and Career Office, and also with me tonight is Dr. Presidio, our Assistant Superintendent of And also with me tonight is Dr. Presidio, our Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, and Kathy Oliver, who's our Director of the Office of Student Testing. So it's a pleasure to be back here for Part Two of Goal One. We do know it's quite a lofty goal, and so we do have a lot of information, and appreciate the opportunity to break it up into two parts. So tonight, as was already indicated, we'll be talking about Strategies Three and Strategies Four, which are the two remaining strategies in student success. So as you see on this slide, overarching Strategy Three, and you saw in the video, the beginning was highlighted with some of our students who are so proud of the work that they're doing, but overarching Strategy Three really addresses two specific outcomes, and those are with regards to making sure that we're providing access and quality for our students in early childhood, as well as making sure that we're coordinating our efforts to provide those opportunities for our students. We cannot do it alone as FCPs, and we have some amazing partners who are working with us in this area. Ms. Derradac Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin also serve on the SKIPP, and we work closely with many of those partners as we meet every month to talk about strategies towards meeting those needs. Basically, as we think about Strategy Three, and we're looking at what does it mean to be school-ready, what does quality, what does access mean, we want to think about it in the vein of those three areas: access, quality, and dosage. We haven't talked with you about dosage before, so tonight, that's something that we'll share a little bit about, and maybe you've heard a little bit about it, I know Ms. Derradac Kofax has. It has been shown, though, that children who do not attend early childhood program, we know that, there's many data points that we've shared with you, and I'm sure many of you have read about, those that do not attend an early childhood program are at a disadvantage. And an early childhood program does not necessarily mean the formal official programming in one of our schools. We have a variety of options and available opportunities that parents are engaged in, and I'm going to share that with you now. So as you see on this slide, when we talk about early childhood opportunities and programs, there are a variety of different opportunities. Some are our programs that are in the area of special education, some are publicly-funded pre-K classrooms, where we actually have a classroom here in FCPs, or in a county program, others might be our family childcare opportunities, where families are providing these services for them in their home. Another might also be private pre-K, where parents are paying tuition to send their students to a private opportunity. And then something called FFN, which is our Family, Friends, and Neighbors Program. Children in FFN and the other feeders also participate in other programs like HIPPEE. And you've heard the term HIPPEE, and someone asked me, "What are we talking about, going back to the seventies?" No, HIPPEE is not going back to the seventies. HIPPEE is Home Instruction for Parents and Preschool Youngsters. So we have many different opportunities when we say students having access to early childhood programs. We're not always confining that to necessarily mean a classroom in FCPs, although that is an area that we have shown much success and are excited about. As you can see on this slide, over the past four years, we have increased the percentage of students entering kindergarten with an early childhood experience, similar to those on the previous slide. However, we do know that more work is needed in this area. And I would like to now outline a couple of the strategies we're doing to help increase access for students. One example of increased access certainly is what we commonly know as FSEP, Family and Early Childhood Education Program, or Head Start. And you can see on this slide, we've made some progress, and actually, three hundred and fifty additional slots have been added over the past five years. And this school year, we actually have added an additional classroom at Fort Belvoir Elementary School. So it is important to note that primarily, most of this growth is for our four-year-olds. And again, while we are pleased to see that we're adding additional slots, it still is an area that I know many of you on the board are very committed and understanding that we need to do more of. Another area of increased access is in the number of adults that have participated in our HIPPEE program, as I just shared with you a minute ago. And the HIPPEE program is a developmentally age-appropriate curriculum program that is designed to help strengthen the child's cognitive and early literacy skills. And here, we're also helping parents to provide social, emotional, and physical development. So through this program, we're helping teach parents how to teach their child at home how to become school-ready and actually have knowledge to enter school on a playing field that's equal to those students who are not participating in a program. In addition to our increase in the FSEP and HIPPEE program, our county partners have increased their number of students as well participating in VPI, Early Head Start, and Head Start. And so we've seen some increase, but again, we're not pleased with the numbers yet. We want to continue to work so that every child has access to an early childhood experience. You see on this map here that despite those efforts and those positive gains, we are still in need of more opportunities, and you can see that our highest need, as you look at the map of our county, tends to be in communities that are also connected to socioeconomic, and we are seeing that we're continuing to look at an equity issue across the counties, where some of our parts of the county have very high percentages of experiences and others do not. And although opportunities for qualified children to attend an early childhood program has grown again, as I've said a few times, it is not meeting the needs of all of our qualified preschoolers in the county. As an example, our most current waitlist for FCPs programs, not just the county, but for FCPs, our most recent number is a hundred and ninety-two, with a hundred and sixty-seven of those being four-year-olds and twenty-five being three-year-olds. And typically, our neediest three-year-olds are the only ones that we put on the waitlist because we do dedicate and aim our dollars right now for our four-year-olds. And it is important to remember that even though it's the FCPs waiting list, students may be placed in another county program as well. I don't have the county numbers available right now in terms of how many are on a list with them, but this is our FCPs list. The second component of school readiness in the area of early childhood is certainly quality. We don't simply want to work towards getting students into seats and into slots. We want to make sure that they have a quality early childhood experience. The path to improving quality of all of our early childhood experiences and making sure that they're somewhat similar and consistent has been a part of our work through the partnerships that we're working on. Early childhood stakeholders, staff, and individuals from the Office for Children, Special Services, our Early Childhood Department, our Professional Learning, and many other partners have begun meeting last March in 2016 to think about how do we address the issue of quality and access. To better coordinate our services, this team of stakeholders has collaborated to develop a common understanding and shared beliefs that you see on this slide. This graphic also depicts the important tenements that are guiding our work for alignment, again, on access and quality. These tenants are rooted in the VDOE's School Readiness Definition, which is focused in ready children, ready families, schools, and communities that are also aligned and partnered together. The guiding tenants include, for us, a focus on Portrait of a Graduate attributes, also best practices that we're learning for early childhood experiences, professional learning, and with a focus on engaging families in their child's education, in order, again, to promote school readiness in a quality manner that is consistent as much as possible. From these shared beliefs of the work that began last March, we have developed an early childhood rubric and resources to help educators support the alignment around those quality practices. The next slide right here is an example of that rubric. This rubric, again, has been vetted with a variety of early childhood practitioners, both preschool, general education, special education, our community partners, community teachers, school readiness teams, and even our FCPs elementary principals. We vetted with them and received some feedback on whether this would be valuable and how it can be useful. This rubric will now serve as a stepping stone for the improvement in the area of quality programming. This rubric and additional resources that I've been working on will be available on the Fairfax Early Childhood Partners website, which will be launched in the coming months. The Fairfax Early Childhood Partners website will be a resource for all early childhood programs that are improving the quality of the programming they provide children. So again, when they enter FCPs as a kindergartner, our youngest learners will start on an equal academic, but also important, social, emotional, and physical playing field, looking holistically at all aspects. We don't want to just make sure they're academically ready, but social, emotional, physical as well. The availability of resources on the Fairfax Early Childhood Partners website, coupled with some existing efforts taking place, like you see here in the Virginia Quality Program, or you might hear it referred to as VQ, and our Neighborhood School Readiness Teams is also another strategy for us to help improve the quality of our programs. FCPs, in collaboration with, again, with our community partners, have expanded the school communities participating in the Neighborhood School Readiness Teams, and we're also making sure that these teams work to support readiness of children by identifying the needs, specific neighborhood needs, and developing relationships to effectively support young children and their families to transition to kindergarten. This school year, we have twenty-six elementary school communities participating in that. And the Virginia Quality System offers a framework also that helps build upon levels of success as we begin to work with those communities. It is also exciting to report that this school year, 9D Fairfax County Child Care and Family Programs are also participating in the Virginia Quality Rating and Improvement System. The third component, as we look at early childhood programs, is dosage. The growing body of brain research you see here shows that brain architecture is built from the bottom up, as you look on this, you can see as we go even before birth on this chart. Starting very early, before birth, this slide shows the development of skills that lay the foundation for all learning. And we know this, if we don't begin to build a strong architecture early, we're creating increased academic and achievement gaps, even before birth in some cases, but certainly before entering school. And because of this, we know that we need to address the needs, social, emotional, physical needs of students at a very early age. In addition to the brain research, there is complementary research on dosage that you saw a quote on the video of, from Nobel laureate economist James J. Heckman. He and his colleagues in their most have identified that comprehensive birth to age five, as opposed to what we've been talking about, year three to age five, can produce higher economic returns than those previously established for preschool programs for three- and four-year-olds. This groundbreaking study shows that high-quality, again, birth-to-age-five programs for disadvantaged children can deliver a thirteen percent per child, per year return on investment. As you may recall, our OPE study extending the FSEP program for two years rather than one, as this was associated with higher achievement, a lower need for ESOL services, and greater participation in advanced coursework during high school. That report was shared with you last year. To build on the previous slide on brain development, this slide shows that our brains are more malleable and require less effort to change from birth to around age eight, and we all know that. When we're younger, we can learn things a lot easier, a foreign language, a new skillset from birth to age eight. You can clearly see, though, on this chart, that from birth to five, that is our prime opportunity for us to close any achievement gaps and address those areas. The increased amount of time or dosage in quality programs then impacts the quality of the outcomes for our children. And again, this is something we know, but here is looking at it from the brain perspective. As I have shared already tonight, we have increased opportunities for children to attend publicly-funded programs, but the majority of our FCPs students are only attending one year. This slide shows the literacy skills in fall and again in the spring for four-year-olds who've attended a FSEP program last year. Although this graph is not a comprehensive look, and it's certainly looking at test scores, it does offer a window into FCPs preschoolers' literacy in the fall and again in the spring. And as we see, for each subtest on the PALS, you can see the percentage of preschoolers that have met or exceeded the developmental range for that particular subtest. As you can also see here, our FSEP students are entering preschool with low literacy skills and majority are not in the developmental range expectations of this assessment. However, you can also see on this graph that significant progress is made in the one year of FSEP. Yet not all children are meeting the spring developmental range on subtests. So it tells us we have to be able to identify early and support early our children. When we do that, we do see some progress, not the progress we want to yet see, but it is promising. This data also is important to keep in mind as we look at the longitudinal data for FSEP, and also as we think about other things beyond just the academic assessments. We are looking forward, and I know many of you are too, because you've emailed me and asked me, about the UVA study that's coming from our Fairfax Pre-K to Third Grade that is currently underway in both FCPs and county early childhood classrooms. This study is designed to look at classroom program and school factors that create and sustain a child's success from preschool to third grade following a cohort of students for five years. And we're excited to be reporting to you as that study goes on what we're learning about the success over a five-year following one particular cohort of students. For Strategy Three, there are three monitoring metrics outlined in our strategic plans. The first metric is to conduct a comprehensive report on kindergarten students who received preschool service. And we've done this, and an OPE study was completed and presented to you in May of 2016. So I'll just highlight a couple of what we found in that report. First, FSEP students start kindergarten with stronger reading skills than those who did not have a formal experience. That was good to see. Second, participation in the program had a small effect on on-time graduation, something we needed to look at. And FSEP students needed fewer special education services. And another important highlight for us was that participating in FSEP for two or more years was associated, again, with higher achievement, lower need for ESOL, and increased participation in advanced coursework, as I've already mentioned. The second metric outlined in the strategic plan is to assess the available pre-K opportunities of students participating in pre-K programming. This slide shows the current publicly, publicly-only-funded preschool programs and the number of funded slots for children. There are many other opportunities, as I mentioned, that may not be publicly-funded, and this also does not include home visiting programs like HIPPEE, but it does give us a little picture of the available opportunities. We do know, again, through our conversations, both internally and in our collaborative discussions at SKIPP, that more opportunities are needed. The last monitoring metric for our early childhood programs is to review longitudinal data for pre-K students through sixth grade. This and the next slide provides one view only of that look, and we're looking forward, again, as I said earlier, to our UVA study, as well as to our universal screener data that will help to think about how we look at our students. On this graph, we compare cohorts of former FSEP students and their performance to the students on free and reduced meals that did not participate in FSEP, and then all other FSEP students at grade, excuse me, FCPs students in the second grade. As you can see on this chart, a greater percentage of second-grade students who participated in FSEP in the spring consistently met our developmental reading assessment benchmarks when compared to those who qualified for free and reduced meals that had not participated in FSEP. And while these same cohorts of students in first and second grade reflect a gap in meeting the grade-level benchmark on our DRA, when compared to all FCPs students, they also continue to exceed the performance of those free and reduced students who did not attend FSEP. So again, we're seeing another data point, academic data point, where we're showing some promise in the fact that those students who participate in FSEP versus those that do not are showing a difference in their academic performance. The next graph represents a comparison at grade five of similar cohorts, but this time on the SOL exam. Here we see a greater percentage of former FSEP students consistently passing grade-level reading and math SOL exams than the other students who qualified for free and reduced meals that did not. However, again, as you see on this slide, there does continue to be a gap between division-wide performance and the students who attended FSEP. So again, it's not the silver bullet, but it shows that there are positive benefits to it, and we have to look holistically, again, at the benefits. A lot of work is being done to improve access, quality, and dosage for our early child experiences, and we do have more information in our narrative about this, but much more work and commitment and additional resources are needed if we're going to effectively address this area. We do have much to be proud We do have much to be proud of, and we've increased our numbers, but we cannot and should not rest until every child in Fairfax County is ready and able to enter kindergarten. We must commit to doing whatever it takes academically, socially, emotionally, physically, whatever we can do to make sure of that reality. You have just heard a little bit about the very complex work and somewhat challenging but exciting work that we're doing to ensure that students are prepared when they enter school. Now I'd like to share with you a little bit about shifting gears to Strategy Four on what we're doing to prepare students after school. So Strategy Three is pre-K, Strategy Four is thinking about college and career. In this strategy, there are two desired outcomes we're working towards: multiple pathways to high school diploma and students who are fluent in two or more language, languages. So tonight, I would like to just highlight a little bit of that exciting work, but there's so much and too much to highlight for you tonight, or I'd be here for several hours. And so I encourage you to please look at the associated narrative and other information posted in Board Docs to learn more about a lot of the other exciting work in this area. The Portrait of a Graduate in our strategic plan also present us, for us, that roadmap to help think about multiple pathways to graduation and thinking about college and career, including specialized classes and technical education and fine arts. And it was wonderful tonight that we could present this as we honored our CTE programs. The monitoring metrics for this particular part of the strategic plan, as you see here, include senior survey and national student clearinghouse data, as well as standardized testing data from SAT, ACT, and PISA. Additionally, there is information required on our, of our metrics in this area about work-based learning and internship participation through career and technical education and through our career and technical service, transition services, along with information about industry service credentials. And again, there's much of that in the narrative, I'm not going to share all of that with you tonight, but just a few. The first outcome I'd like to examine is the focus on multiple pathways to graduation. And we've talked about this at a previous work session and its ongoing work that we're very, very excited about here, and also very excited about at the state level as we're engaging in this conversation with VDOE and our State Board of Ed. In FCPS, all students create a student learning, learning plan that provides them with the opportunity to truly individualize their learning and their path while in high school. Students in grades seven through twelve work closely with school staff to develop each of the tasks in their plan, so it's very individualized to their goals, and aligning then the coursework that they will take and their experiences they will have with their interests and keeping their future career and/or college goals in mind. Again, as you heard in our November seventh work session where we brought multiple pathways to graduation to you, enhanced programming and opportunities for students to focus on pathways are being developed to mirror new state standards to begin with students entering ninth grade in two thousand and eighteen. The sixteen national-recognized career pathways that we shared with you have been reviewed, and a variety of pathway options have been designed to give students those options for course sequences that we hope will ignite their passion for learning. You saw some of that in the video today, but there's so many other things we couldn't highlight in that short video. The Pathway Project will allow for greater flexibility and student choice and assist, certainly, in the development of the student learning plan in order to help students really prepare for their careers and college goals. Additionally, we do have a continued focus on how do we provide increased flexibility to students within the existing graduation requirements, although we're working at the state level to see if we can get some more flexibility in that. We do want to think about what we have already and what flexibility might we have, and there's a couple of options, as you know, we're bringing back to the board for your consideration. We also want to think closely about verified credits, course options, and all of that work, again, that we talked about, multiple pathways. So if board members want to review back November seventh, we also do have information in our Board Docs and the narrative. As part of the pathways to graduation and that exciting work, there is a significant focus on increasing work-based learning opportunities for students. And I was very pleased to see that the State Board of Ed made that a focus in their work as they moving on, thinking through not only ESSA, but also through graduation requirements, work-based learning and/or internship opportunities. We have completed a national review of best practices related to work-based learning and have crafted a division-wide definition for work-based learning that provides a continuum of work-based learning experiences for our FCPS students. Additionally, the senior survey now, and this came out of a couple of your recommendations, I believe also, includes a detailed question about work-based learning in order to gather information from students regarding their experiences. So our focus on embedding opportunities for students to explore and/or experience careers through their classes, through service learning, through work-based learning opportunities will, will continue to increase, and again, with the partnership with the state, hopefully even more. One example that we've talked to you about, but I want to remind us about, and certainly for the public, is our partnership with Genesis Works. Twenty-one students from six different high schools are now participating in year-long paid internships with the focus on information technology, which we know is very much in demand in this area, Northern Virginia. This is the highest number of internships that Genesis Works has supported in its history during their first year of any partnership. And Genesis Works has shared with us that they are working to target, and we're excited about this as well, an enrollment of a hundred and fifty students for the second year. This year it's twenty-one. We are continuing to explore additional opportunities and to gain, for students to gain those internship experiences through this program and through other means. And by combining the efforts of the pathways to graduation, work-based learning, student learning plan initiatives, we believe we are enhancing college and career readiness and relevant experiences for students. And we thank you for your advocacy also in working with the state level, and some of you I know have reached out to the state and legislators and, and State Board of Ed members in this area. Fairfax County truly is leading the way in that area in Virginia. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, also known as STEAM, serve as a tremendous interdisciplinary focus for us for the development of our Portrait of a Graduate skills. And as I just talked about, the multiple pathways, these are helping in the development of multiple pathways work. In the last eighteen months, there has been a huge increase in the number of elementary schools that have dedicated STEAM labs. As an example, in two thousand and fifteen, four elementary schools, four, reported having a STEAM lab compared to sixty-six this year. STEAM labs provide authentic learning experiences that provide students those opportunities to apply content knowledge as well as Portrait of a Graduate skills. Again, elementary, so we're not just waiting for high school. You might have seen, like, the conversation sounded about high school. We want to start early as well. We're continuing to increase opportunities as well for our teachers so that they can gain experiences with integrated STEAM instruction by offering academy courses, curriculum writing, and sharing of these opportunities across the division. Another example we're currently excited about, the Global STEM Challenges Program, which is highlighted in this image, excuse me, right here, and was included in the video that introduced this presentation tonight. The Global STEM Challenges Program is an interdisciplinary three-year program focusing on authentic global problems and practices based at Edison High School. Students enrolled in the Global STEM Challenges Program take their mathematics, their science, and engineering courses integrated into one interdisciplinary class. In addition, those students who complete the three-year program will receive a tenth academic credit in computer science, which will be embedded throughout their program. Students are collaborating with higher education, and we're working to connect them with business and community partners through this program throughout the, in order to prepare them for college and career. And already this year, students who have worked collaboratively to design their own microscopes and indoor hydroponic growth systems for crops, how exciting, they're actually making real-world applications to demands and needs that we have in our economy, and certainly those two examples that will help our environment. It is incredible to see how the ninth graders in this program are applying Portrait of a Graduate skills, and we're excited to begin year two of this program next year. Related to the STEAM field, I know, we all know here in Northern Virginia, cybersecurity, cyber is in demand. The expansion of cybersecurity pathways continues to be a focus for FCPS. In response to the increased demand for cybersecurity jobs right here in our backyard, but certainly around the world, cybersecurity courses and experiences are being expanded. During this school year, cybersecurity courses are now offered at four school sites: Chantilly Academy, Marshall Academy, Edison Academy, and Mount Vernon High School. Additionally, eighteen FCPS schools with ninety total teams will be participating at the National Youth Cyber Education Program, Cyber Patriot. At the center of Cyber Patriot is the National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. This competition puts teams of high school and middle school students in the position of a newly hired IT professional and tasks them with the, the job of managing the network of a small company. This year, for the first time, seven middle school students from FCPS, in addition to the more than ten high schools, will be participating in this competition. Middle school participation is sponsored through a partnership from our Education Foundation and the Community Foundation. Over a two-year period, ten middle schools will be receiving funding to jumpstart a Cyber Patriot program. Schools work closely with FCPS school-based sponsors and business volunteers to provide students with the resources to be successful as part of this national program. Additionally, FCPS will participate in the Virginia National Security Agency, NSA, Day of Cyber School Challenge, and provide opportunities for schools and students to explore virtual, real-world cyber scenarios and other cybersecurity resources. Again, these are just a few, we have many more, so. In collaboration with the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, Ms. Huff is a member of that, and she was at a meeting today where we talked about some of this. And through the review of workforce trends data and student interest data, course offerings at our high school academies are continually evaluated to ensure that they're reflecting industry demand as well as connect academic knowledge. We want to make sure we're meeting the demands of industry, but having that rigorous academic push. New in this school year is the firefighting academy, which you saw in the video, as well as we've talked about it at the last presentation, at the West Ox Fire Training Facility, which is highlighted on this slide in the picture. This was launched through a partnership with the Fairfax County Fire and Rescue Department, and thirteen students are participating in the inaugural year of the program. In addition, the Emergency Medical Technician Program, or EMT, has been expanded to include an additional site at West Potomac Academy. The additional programs in health and medical sciences have been developed in response to growing student interest and certainly growing demand in the industry for the need for healthcare providers. Often, these programs include waitlists to enter in available academy programs within the career cluster, as well as the increased workforce demand in our local region. So as we continue to monitor workforce trends, we're seeking opportunities for community partnerships and academy offerings to, in order to enhance those multiple pathways to graduation. Again, just a few of the many opportunities we're working towards, we're excited about them, and we encourage you to look at our narrative, and we'd be happy to share more with you offline so that I don't take three hours for this presentation. The second desired outcome of Strategy Four is that students will be fluent in two or more languages. Efforts to increase language offerings across our division continue and are, and are challenging for a variety of reasons, but we are looking at how we can do this. In elementary school, emphasis has been placed on expanding flows or learning through content programs and school-based two-way immersion programs. School way, school-based two-way immersion programs are any school that has at least thirty-five percent of that population speaking another language, so that students don't have to go to an immersion program, no transportation is needed, it's right there in their local neighborhood. That is an area we're looking at right now in terms of how we may expand that. In the coming months, we're also looking at exploring how technology can be leveraged to deepen and expand opportunities for learning another language. And this year, we're working with schools to expand those school-based learning, school-based immersion programs. And currently, we have two schools who are already going to be expanding, and we have six others that are in the process of working with us, with their staff and communities to see if they're interested. Language opportunities for secondary students continue to increase as well. Just this past year, Mr. Moon knows that our Korean language offerings were added to Centerville High and Liberty Middle, and thanks to a partnership with our Korean Embassy in helping us with some resources. We also added Chinese to McLean High and Arabic to our Fairfax Academy, and we are currently offering twelve languages across schools, including American Sign Language. And we are one of the very few school divisions in the country to be offering a Vietnamese program, which is in its second year now, at Falls Church High School. This past June marked the initial awarding of the biliteracy seal. To earn the seal of biliteracy, students must pass all required end-of-course assessments in English, reading, and writing at the proficient or higher level, and demonstrate proficiency at the intermediate or higher level in one or more languages other than English that they're studying through the VDOE appropriate assessment. And in the first year of doing this, three thousand five hundred and twenty-six grade twelve students earned that Virginia seal of biliteracy. FCPS is continuing to partner with Education First to operate the International Study, Travel, and Service Learning Program, and this partnership has been providing our students with unique experiences that combine knowledge and firsthand experiences in global environments that are connected to thinking about citizenship, careers, and amongst many other opportunities. Since only a limited number of students certainly have the opportunity to participate, we're looking at ways, again, to employ a variety of technologies so we can engage entire classrooms and schools with international and cross-cultural partnerships. Our pilot program has three main components for their online exchange: virtual exchange, activities, local and virtual project exhibitions. We will now move on to review the metrics for overarching Strategy Four with the percentage of seniors prepared for post-high school as measured by senior exit survey and post-high school survey. As we strive to best prepare our students for the next step after high school, it is important to consider where are our students going immediately following high school? Each year, we do have senior students complete a senior survey as they graduate. And we're just, of course, making an assumption there, self-reporting this, but for those students going to a two-year or four-year college, if they feel college-ready, they're letting us know. And based on this survey, the percentage of graduating seniors who indicated that they plan to pursue two-year or four-year college immediately after high school remains consistently high. As you can see on this slide, for the class of two thousand and sixteen, ninety-two percent of our graduating students, approximately thirteen thousand high school graduate, of the approximately thirteen thousand, indicated that their intention is to pursue a post-secondary educational institution. Of that, sixty-two percent indicated attending a four-year college was their plan, thirty percent planned to attend a two-year college, five percent planned to pursue military and, or an employment opportunity, and three percent indicated other educational plans. The National Student Clearinghouse cap, data captures information from private, public, and for-profit and not-for-profit two-year institutions and four-year institutions, and provides us with the general overview of how FCPS graduates are progressing through that post-secondary opportunities. As a further sign of the success of our college readiness programs, the National Student Clearinghouse data indicates that our FCPS students who are attending two-year and four-year institutions are persisting from freshman to sophomore year at very high rates. A link to this report is available in your narrative so you can dig deeper into that data. Another metric that is in the strategic plan is looking at our SAT scores. Our average SAT scores continue to increase and remain above the averages for Virginia and the nation, and they exceed the, the college-ready benchmark, which has been established by the College Board. For that, an SAT score of fifteen fifty is associated with a sixty-five percent probability of obtaining a GPA in the first year of a B or higher, which in turn is associated with a high likelihood of success for college. Students meeting the benchmark score of fifteen fifty were more likely to enroll in a four-year college, had higher first-year GPAs, and more likely to be retained for their second and third year than those students who did not attain the SAT benchmark. As you can see on this slide, the average SAT As you can see on this slide, the average SAT score for FCPS was sixteen seventy-two, well above the fifteen fifty. This slide shows the percent of our students, now it does, the percent of our students by ethnicity who scored above national averages on the overall SAT scores, which include critical reading, math, and writing. And again, you can see high scores, some gap relates to various ethnic groups, but even that, we do see some high scores, some areas to work on. Here we see the percent of our students by subgroup who scored above national averages on the overall SAT scores. Since last year, there has been a slight increase in the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged, scoring above the national average, and also percentages for students with limited English proficiency or students with disabilities have slightly decreased. This presentation includes the data for the overall SAT, while the comparable data for the ACT is available in our narrative report posted in Board Docs. Additionally, the performance data from the most recent PISA exam was presented last year and is included in the narrative report that is posted in Board Docs. However, the most recent PISA exam that was given, those reports will not be available until late August. So I didn't put it up here because we previously presented the most recent data that is in the narrative, and then in August, we will have that available for you. Another monitoring metric for Strategy Four is focused on industry credentials earned by students. Current seniors who entered ninth grade, who entered ninth grade in the 2013, 2014 were the first graduating class required to earn an industry credential for a standard diploma. And while the overall percentage of students passing at least one industry credential has remained consistent since last year, the percentage of Asian, Black, and Hispanic students passing at least one industry credential has increased, as you can see on this graph. Looking at the percentage of students who passed an industry credential by subgroup, the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities passing at least one industry credential have all increased since 2015. Staying on the topic of career preparation, the 2016 senior survey, as I mentioned earlier, included a new and more detailed question asking about work-based learning experiences. And that came up, I believe, last year as we talked about this. Student engagement with work-based learning experiences, as extrapolated from the most recent 2016 survey, indicates the following: Twenty-seven percent of the approximately twelve thousand eight hundred students surveyed reported that they had participated in job shadowing and internships, either paid or unpaid. Eighty-one point five percent of students reported that they had participated in other work experiences, either paid or unpaid, which could include things like employment or perhaps even volunteering. And twenty-four percent of students reported that they had no work-based learning experiences. The number of internships for CTE students specifically is not currently tracked. However, in the 2015, 2016 school year, through career and transition services, eight hundred and forty-three students participated in career assessments. Five hundred and eighty-seven students received academy support services while participating in academy class, and two hundred and fifty-seven students participated in services through special education career centers and the Secondary Transition to Employment Program. Overall, career and transition services has worked with three hundred and ninety-one different business partners and supported one thousand one hundred and two students in non-paid community work experiences. More information, again, about this is included in the narrative, and I could go on and on. And I want to conclude now, like, we could stay up here and talk about this, but as you can see, the work for Strategies Three and Four is very exciting work, innovative work, on the edge. The state is looking at us, speaking to us, wanting to know what we're doing, and we're very proud of that work. You can also see there are many opportunities for us to improve, many opportunities needed if we're going to develop more experiences for our early childhood, and that equity as we looked at that map across the county. And so we're continuing to align our work to support the outcomes, as stated here in the strategic plan. We are working towards developing those portrait of a graduate's skills, and while there is much work to be done, and truly reaching and challenging every student to prepare them for college and career, we are excited to be able to share with you what we have done to this point, and we look forward to being able to answer questions either tonight, or understand the work session, which was going to be February thirteenth, is now March thirteenth, so we look forward to engaging with you then. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Duran, for an excellent and very thorough report. As Dr. Duran said, we are going to have a future work session on this before we approve the report on Goal One, but if board members wanted to make comments or ask a few general questions, I do have people in the queue, Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Duran and your team, here with us tonight, Jen and Maura. And I will ask more specific questions at the work session, but these are some of the things I'm most excited about, so I appreciate the thorough report. I had a couple of questions and maybe just more for the work session.
Absolutely.
I guess for where we talk about, you know, FISAP students and where they are compared to division-wide, I'm wondering if there is data for, are there any divisions we know of where FISAP students reach the same level as division-wide?
I'm not sure to answer that right now, but we will look for that and have that for you at the work session.
That would be great, thank you. And also, another question, the UVA study.
Yes.
Will it be comparing students participating in each of our different program offerings in our pre-K?
Yes, it will be looking at both our internal, I don't know if it's every single one, but we'll be looking at our FCPS programs as well as our county programs.
Okay, do we know if that will include early and family literacy programs?
No.
It will not, okay.
Classroom experiences.
Okay. And then, I'm so excited about Genesis Works and that partnership, if there are any ways we can help with that, please let us know. And just to be clear, what you're saying is that there is the biliteracy seal, about twenty-seven percent of our graduating high schoolers receive that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's amazing, that's incredible.
In the first year. We hope it'll be higher than that next year, than this year.
Good, wonderful. I'm very excited about that, as you know, I'm really supportive of our school-based two-way immersion programs, so I really do hope we can move forward.
We've got two for sure, and about six maybe others, so.
I hope one is mine. I think that's all for today, so many questions for Monday, once I've had a time to thoroughly review it, but thank you so much to your team, I know you've worked so hard. And I guess the only other thing is, I know we want to be able to fund more pre-K programs, I think, the data is pretty clear, that thirty percent, thirteen percent return and everything we've seen, I know you do so much to bright our funding and to ensure that we can reach as many as we can, so I do hope, moving forward, we can work with our partners, local, state, federal level, to find new and creative ways to do that, and really thank you, this is valuable work, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I just want to reiterate, while we are definitely committed to wanting more funding for programs, we want to make sure it's quality, so we have to look at both. So that's part of our work as well, is not just getting additional funding to open new classrooms and new experiences, but is it quality learning experiences, and how are we making sure to take the time to provide that, you know, thorough homework and background knowledge to make sure it's ready to go and not just another space.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
It's going to be very hard to try to limit myself questions, but especially since we're not having this till March, can we go to page eight?
Well, you can also offline, we can certainly before March.
Definitely. Can we go to page eight? It was eight on the screen. I don't know what page it is on the thing, but page eight was at the bottom.
The one about FISAP?
Mm-hmm. So, from school year twelve, thirteen to sixteen, seventeen, four years later, there's a twenty percent increase in the provision of the number of students in FISAP and Head Start, but I didn't see anywhere in here, and maybe I missed it, the number of qualifying? So is this still, it's this number plus whatever's on the waitlist is the total number?
Yes, this is the number of slots that we have available, not the total number of qualifying.
Right, so after the, so I remember at some point the number being eight hundred or nine hundred or something on a waitlist a couple of years ago. Is the fact that there's been a twenty percent growth in the seats, has that decremented the number on the waitlist, or is it still eight or nine hundred on top of now twenty percent growth?
It hasn't helped with the waitlist, but again, we still have a waitlist, currently it's a hundred and ninety-two for our programs, and I'm not sure the eight hundred, was that inclusive of our programs and county? Okay, so that number was in county also.
What, what's the number?
The number right now for FCPS is a hundred and ninety-two, I don't know if we have the county.
That's not the number, that's not the number, the number of qualifying.
Oh, the number on the waitlist, or the number of qualified?
Qualifying.
I'm not sure if we have, do you know that right now?
It's like eight hundred, isn't it? Or maybe smaller? Can you, all right.
What do you mean by qualified, I'm sorry?
Qualifying, qualifying, I mean, we can only put so many on the wait, we can only put so many on the waitlist, but there's more than are on the waitlist who qualify, correct?
Correct.
We're only taking the waitlist for children.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so we will look at getting it to you, so you're looking at the number that the state qualifies for being able to be in a program?
Look, I didn't think that this was that hard, it's a Venn diagram. The total number of qualifying, the total number on the waitlist, and the inner circle is the total number that we're providing, seventeen forty-five. All I know right now is the seventeen forty-five. So in context, that seventeen forty-five just says, oh, well, we agree the number of seats, twenty percent. In comparison to what? Data and context, right?
Okay, so we'll have to get that to you.
Okay. And then on page, well, I sort of answered that question. The growth, this is the one I didn't write down, the maintenance of effort, you know, the one year later, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know which one that is. Yeah, there you go. Is this one year later?
Page nine.
Right, this, no, no. It's their scores one year later.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sixteen?
Oh, it was sixteen.
The PALS data?
I wrote sixteen and nineteen, I didn't think it was that. So page sixteen, so that's great, except one year later is again, that's a snapshot. What is it over time?
Okay, so we.
What is the retention of this amount of effort over time?
So right now, we have, so you're asking in terms of, over what time?
Cohort progression, so, you know, what does that, I mean, I don't even know statistically, I mean, that looks like an enormous gain, I'm looking at like, probably something like two, two hundred percent gain in some instances, but a two hundred percent gain for what period of time? Does that level off? I mean, is.
Because as I stated, this was not a comprehensive look at that over time, this was just a snapshot of looking at how students did in that one year from fall to spring.
But that's a pretty dramatic presentation to make to us, that there's a two hundred percent, you know, increase a year later.
It's not with a year later, this is from fall to spring.
Two or three years later, what does that look like?
So thank you for the question, I think that's a really good point. On this particular assessment, this is looking over the course of that particular year with these early literacy skills, so if we could go to slide twenty-one, I think that set of data really speaks more to your question about what is the progression of student gains over time. So this is the cohort data, looking at those student gains in comparison as they track over those following grade years.
Okay, I'll spend more time on that before.
And that's SOLs, this one is SOLs, whereas the other one was PALS, so those are two different, but this does give over time.
Okay, well, and anything that you can do to highlight the difference in that would be helpful. I appreciate the comment that you made, that, you know, there's a lot of work left to be done, and that we're going to do whatever it takes until this is a reality. I think that that's unreality, and I think that it's unfair for us to make those kind of statements personally, because when I hear about Genesis Works, while I appreciate Ms. Palchek's comment, that's a program that's benefiting twenty-one students. We have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand students, and so the notion that, you know, I mean, it's neat that we're highlighting that, it's neat that we're highlighting, I don't know what, seventeen hundred and forty-five out of whatever, but it's the contextual understanding of what does this take? And I know that Ms. McLaughlin and I in the past have done back-of-the-envelope comparisons on what, you know, you say, well, we don't want to open any classrooms unless they're quality pre-K, well, they're four, and we have one year to get them, and, you know, I mean, this is where I align with, you know, some people across the aisle from me over on the Board of Supervisors, you know, like John Faust, who says, look, you know, you're talking about, you can only provide quality pre-K for a four-year-old, and we'll do whatever it takes, no, we won't, we have one year to do it, and the opportunity cost of getting some access to literacy and numeracy at pre-K is better than none at all, because, you know, something is a gigantic step forward than zero. And so I worry when I hear things like, we're gonna, you know, the goal is to do whatever it takes. No, the goal shouldn't be to do whatever it takes, because whatever it takes means probably, I don't know what the pre-K tab is right now, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year, which is again, the cost of a UVA education. You know, what's the long-term payoff? So that's something I'll definitely want to be talking about in March. On page thirty, again, talking about programs for small numbers of people, the international travel component that you highlight there, who's paying for that? Who benefits from that? And are the students the ones having to pay out of pocket for that?
There are some students who do pay out of pocket, as well as there are opportunities based on their income to get some opportunities for payment, so it's a combination. And as I indicated, this is just one example, and we know it's limiting, so.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just saying, of the things that we're highlighting, you know, twenty-one students, the international study program, that either the families can write the check without a problem, the kids at the bottom are getting assistance, and the kids in the middle are likely the kids that the families really can't afford to write the check, but they're not going to qualify for assistance, and there's not that many of them, it's just stuff that I won't highlight. And then the last thing, well, page thirty-three, where you talked about the persistence to sophomore in college, how do we find them? Because Ms. Ferris and I were just talking about this the other day on a tangential note about a follow-up. How did we, like, how big of the sample size were we talked about the persistence of students from freshman to sophomore? I mean, I'm not expecting in detail, but just.
So the National Student Clearinghouse data.
So those aren't our students, that's not.
These are Fairfax students.
Okay.
But the data set that we're using to report, it comes from the National Student Clearinghouse, which captures the data from the universities and colleges, and it captures about ninety-eight percent of the universities and colleges in the country.
That's great, actually, and then.
And the link on the narrative will show you could dig into that data and see some more.
Okay, and then page thirty-seven, this is my, I promise, this is my last question for tonight. In a growing multicultural, multi-ethnic universe, country, state, county, school district, there's Asian, Black, Hispanic, and white, how, what's happening to the kids that don't fit in one of those categories? Is it all self-reported?
Yeah, these are the categories that we are currently, have received the data on, so this is how they're coding themselves on there.
Okay. And is this what we want to be measuring, is just you pass one industry credential task? I mean, is this, do we ask for this?
Yes, what's in blue is the metric in strategic plan, which asks for the number of industry credentials received per number of students and by subgroup, so yes.
Well, I just feel like this is like a lowest common denominator, like, number, it's like, oh, at least one, like.
Yeah, that, that.
Couldn't we?
That was exactly what was in the metric for us to report back on.
Okay, well, I would suggest that maybe we talk about whether the fact that we want to be having a report that is the lowest bar of a report of, oh, well, at least one. Okay, what, like, how about at least five, you know, or something like that?
All of the areas in the. All of the areas in the metrics are exactly what's asked of us in the Strategic Plan, so any of those would be exactly what we've-
I, I just potentially found something I don't like in the Strategic Plan, that maybe we could have, you know, a little bit more robust understanding of how the kids are doing. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Strauss? Thank you very much for this enlightening and very detailed plan. I look forward to being able to discuss this more in depth in March. I was very pleased to see the progress for our early learning. We've come a long way, and not only in Head Start, but the other programs as well. I think we've made tremendous pro, uh, progress with that, as we partner with the county. And you also have indicated that HIPPEE is not necessarily involved in the, the state as well. And that also is a very important, all of the early learning opportunities for students. So, I want to thank our early learning staff, who are here tonight. And I know that we've all worked very hard to, to get there. The data on, uh, the large data points, I think are very impressive. Kids going, uh, seeking postgraduate, post-high-school education, their persistence in staying in school, that we just talked about, is very impressive. Obviously, there's always a lot more work to do, and there will always be a lot more work to do. And children don't come to us in, in a perfect state, no matter what. So, but I think this is very, very impressive, and certainly, we always need to be looking at our metrics and where we're going. And as we work with the state and the Innovation Committee-
Yes.
Hopefully, that will give us opportunities to, to continue to use other forms of assessment. We've already discussed that, and that was in the other report that you presented. So, I won't take up a lot of time. Thank you very much. This is an excellent report. I thank you for all the data that has, I know Kathy works very hard on all the data piece. We appreciate that. And I think this gives us a, a very interesting picture of what we're doing, what has been accomplished, what our roadmap is, and how well we are doing in terms of our strategic plans. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz? Yeah, thank you, yes. Thank you for a very enthusiastic presentation as well. Thank you. I think there is an awful lot here. I, I mean, I think a couple of things on some of the pilots, and when we go through this, and we do see what seem like relatively low numbers in some of the programs. But I think for a system of our size, the way that we try new things, introduce new initiatives, move forward, make progress, is to pilot a lot of things and start small. But I'm glad to see that we don't, you know, we're initiating things that have been proven elsewhere. You know, we're, we're benchmarking against what works, and we're trying to make it grow naturally and organically within our system. So, I'm, I'm proud of all that we're doing, even if we're only serving a relative handful of kids. Because if we do it well, we show that it can succeed, it will grow and, and make a huge difference. You know, I've been a teacher, and you never know, you know, you have twenty-eight kids in your class one year, and, and you may not know for a long time what a difference you make in the twenty-eight lives, right? But it's huge. So, I think it's important that we continue to be willing to, to pilot and to try new things. And I think we're going in the right direction on all of that, because it aligns with what we care about. It aligns with what the state is looking at. We are working with the state, helping the state to be strategic and progressive in their thinking. So, it's all in line with that. A couple, just one question I had about preschool. I think that the county and the school system, I think we're supposed to be working together on some sort of strategic look at kindergarten readiness.
School readiness.
And hopefully, a little bit of a multi-year strategic look, and with budget implications as we go down. So, I was just wondering if you had any, any update on how that's going, when the boards will see it? And I, maybe I should know that, but I don't. And if you have any early indications that there might be new types of programs in there, you know, that we're expanding the type of program we offer? And I think in particular, and I have no idea if this is a good idea or not, so, but the idea of sliding fee scale kind of a program like SAC, which might open up more slots and help with the budget question. So, anyway, not tonight necessarily, but I'd be interested in any update on that as we go forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Copax?
Hi. Thank you for this very informative report. I, I only have one question right now, and I'm sure I will have more later. For the pre-K to three cohort from UVA, what year are we in that study?
We just started. First year, first year.
This is the first year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I have right now. But thank you all for this report. And, you know, I think you continue to, I, I think it's important that we continue to listen and understand that pre-K is an extremely important dimension in, in, in education, in the educational spectrum. I, I'm really interested in that cohort in particular, because so much of what happens is often not tracked. There is data, and some of it, and, and it has been tracked by other surveys. But I think it's important that we here in the county do that for proof for some of those people who, who think it doesn't make an impact and think i, it, it doesn't change things. So, I think it's very important that we're doing that, and I appreciate that. And Ms. Heinz, we're going to be having a work session on SKIPP, which is also involved in a lot of these initiatives. So, we'll get some more information on some of these things, but particularly the pre-K element, and how that's working, and how we're working together. And Amora and her team are all working on that, as well with the county team. So, thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. I find this report one that I, I want to unpack more and more. You know, you, you start pulling the string one place, and you go, oh, wait. As I pull this, there are, there are other things that I want to know more about. So, I'm looking forward to our work session. I do think that this report is really about creating opportunities. And so, I appreciated your focus on the early childhood piece at the beginning. I, too, would like to see that cohort followed for several years, just to see how we can demonstrate the return on the investment. Because we all know how important that investment is. And it's particularly important for families that may not have, parents that have a higher level of education themselves. And so, I, I look forward to looking at that a bit more. On page twenty-one, or slide twenty-one. Let me bring it up myself.
The SOL comparison of cohorts?
Mm-hmm. The SOL longitudinal data. What I found interesting there was the, the math, the gap was pretty persistent over time. But the reading seemed to have a bit more flexibility, or a bit more volatility. Is that because of the type of pre-K experience that children are receiving? Or is it because, you know, with math, there isn't a lot of emphasis in the pre-K experience anywhere? But reading has become, and literacy has become more of an emphasis, do you think?
Well, I certainly think that we have to look at math in a more, we've talked about this at our last work session, and how we're supporting math skills fundamentally at the elementary level. So, that may be a factor, but I think it's probably more complex than that. But definitely, we have had a, a large focus on literacy and continue to at the elementary level, and now we've expanded, as you know, to the secondary level. So, many times also, we find that math for elementary teachers is an area of challenge for them to, that we need to support them more in. So, whether it's resources, whether it's curriculum, whether it's training, so that may be a factor. I mean, that's really, and the, yeah, and the drop is also for where the state changed the standards as well, so that's another piece to it. But it, so it's, as I said, it's very complex. It's related to the standards, but it's also perhaps maybe the emphasis and focus on math at the elementary level. Kind of a lot of that.
In looking at that, we captured fifth grade. Is that because that's the data that's available, and we don't have that much data if we were to extrapolate it into eighth grade or into high school?
Well, no, in this particular metric, it was asked for pre-K through sixth grade.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
That was the metric asked of us in the Strategic Plan. So, we, on the previous slide showed second grade and then fifth grade. We just chose those two grades, but we didn't go beyond that, because again, the metric specifically asks pre-K through sixth grade.
Okay, excellent.
And we do have that, but we didn't report it here to show you. So, if we could share that with you.
And then my last question is regarding the, actually, last question and then a comment. You talk about the work experiences on the exit surveys, with twenty-four point nine percent of our graduates have some sort of work experience, either through a job shadowing, a internship, or some other form. Do we know over time if that's declined?
No, because, are you talking on slide thirty-nine? Is that what you're referring to?
Uh, let me see.
Make sure I answer that.
Yes.
So, again, this was the first time that we included this detailed question, so we don't have that data to compare over time. This was the very first time we included that level of detail to ask students that question.
The only reason I ask is because, you know, I'm old. And when I went through high school, just about everybody that I knew had some sort of work experience. And so, at twenty-four point nine percent, I just, or twenty-four point four percent, I thought that was an interesting data point. Especially when you look at the other chart you have of the CTE, and who has at least one certification, which I think is brilliant. I mean, I would like to see that evolve over time with more numbers. But what that says is that that's where there isn't an opportunity gap. We're addressing that need and that experience for every child.
Well, so again, we don't know the data specifically to say if it's dropped or increased. However, I will say that we have not had the opportunity at the high school level through time, through scheduling, through course requirements, et cetera, which is why we're looking at the multiple pathways and getting opportunities now through ESSA that we didn't have under No Child Left Behind. So, there's a lot of compound factors to why recently, high schools may have not had the opportunity to even give those work-based learning experiences to all. This is looking at all, not for specific programs, but for all. That's one area to consider. But again, we don't have the data per se to compare, since this is the first year we actually put this question in.
So, again, thank you. You guys have a lot of great information in the report. I look forward to digging deeper into it. And thanks again for all that you do for our kids, starting as early as age three. It's fantastic.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So, I will certainly follow the guidance that we will have an opportunity at the week's work session. But I just kind of wanted to highlight a few things that hopefully spur my colleagues to be thinking about when we do have this work session. On slide thirty-two, the percent of post-high-school graduation plans, you know, I noted here that sixty-two percent intend to go to a four-year college, twenty-seven percent for the two-year college. I would be curious if it's not in the body of the report, that maybe we could look at what's happened, not just in the five years, but really like over the last decade, with, with those statistics for Fairfax County. Because I, I do think there's been some change, and part of it, I think, is the economy. You know, the, the cost of providing for a four-year tuition is, is gotten higher and higher for families. The strength of Northern Virginia Community College becomes a real viable choice for families. But I think that would be a, a statistic that would be good to look at, because the reality is, it is a marker that colleges and universities look at in terms of the competitiveness of a school division, is what percent are going on to four-year schools. So, I, I would like to look at that, especially given our reputation as a high-performing school district. Because I think we also might see that, that you'll see, you'll see variations among our twenty-five high schools when you include TJ, on what those numbers might be. And that might be interesting to look at, too. The other one that I, I just wanted to also talk about is, I think it's on slide thirty-five and thirty-six. It was the percent above the national average on SAT combinations by different subgroups.
Yes.
And so, I just wanted to kind of bring that to staff and the board's attention, because I think we see a notable achievement gap there. And so, I, I would like, hope, I would enjoy having some real dialogue about what are our assessments for why that's still looking that way. Anecdotally, and from experience of being a high school parent, I am very familiar with the fact that socioeconomics plays a role. I mean, if your family can afford a thousand-dollar SAT prep class, that's going to be helpful and, and have a very, and can have a very significant effect on a student's test scores. So, you know, when we, when we look at that, I think it's, again, just helpful for getting an idea sometimes of what happens for our students when we look at achievement gaps that are not just on our Virginia SOLs, but even on some of these national standards. And while I know means embrace what an SAT or an ACT might demonstrate about an overall student's intellect and ability, it is still a, a measure that we, we can look at. So, I really appreciated how you brought that into this part of the report, and especially how you also broke it out by, by socioeconomic need, as well as English learners and students with disabilities. Those are all important markers to, to really gauge. As a school system that talks about Portrait of Graduate, talks about wanting to really help students be college and career-ready, but really removing gaps and barriers to opportunity, we know that a college education plays such a vital role in, in someone's career and earnings potential. So, those are, those are just kind of the key things that I wanted to kind of spotlight tonight, and, and really hope we'll get a chance to delve in more. So, thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a go-back by Mrs. Schultz.
I just wondered if you had had a question, or question, had an opportunity to look at the U.S. Department of Education report that just came out on student improvement in, related to investments by the U.S. Department of Education. Have, have you compared that at all with what we're doing here?
We have not compared it yet. We're just beginning to look at it, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a lengthy-
Not comparing it, but I've certainly seen that.
Okay, it's a lengthy report. I think it's four hundred and nineteen pages. But there are some pretty significant key findings on where seven billion dollars of investment went into, you know, some struggling schools and struggling situations. And when we talk about some of the things that I was talking about earlier, you know, that's part of the comprehensive conversation that I think we need to have in terms of how we spend money and what it, what it does in terms of student achievement. So, I, I don't necessarily expect a conversant, you know, conversation with this lengthy report, but I do think it needs to be, become a part of the dialogue that we're going to have now in March.
March thirteenth.
In March. Thank you.
So, I just had a few comments myself before we close out tonight. Thank you again for this excellent report, and I look forward to more of a conversation with you. The, the pre-K, I, you can see that we've made some, some real gains there, and that's, that's really important. I appreciate you highlighting the, the equity issues, though. That's certainly something that we need to be cognizant of, you know, particularly when we look at who's on the waitlist and where they're on the waitlist. So, that's something that I'd like to pursue with you a bit more when we have our work The ESOL part of it, I was particularly interested in the, the gains made there. I believe we, we've had a conversation before showing that, that our ESOL students were particularly impacted by the, the preschool experience and showed-
Right.
-really significant gains. And so, we had just broached the topic at one point about, do we prioritize that? And I, I think that's something that we might want to consider, because, you know, we're seeing really, really significant gains among our ESOL students. And I'm looking at some of your numbers there as well, with, you know, the, the number of Hispanic disadvantaged students taking the SOLs. I see it's more than doubled in the last decade. So, you know, that tells us something about where some of our needs are. Marvelous work on the, the work-based learning. I'm so glad we're expanding that. Would love to hear more about that. Also, the two-way immersion, like Ms. Palczek, I, I think that- Also, the two-way immersion, like Ms. Palchek, I, I think that's wonderful, the, you know, great opportunities. When we come back and talk about that, I would be particularly interested in where the potential is. You know, where, I believe you said it was when you have 35% speaking one language.
Correct.
And I would be particularly interested in where the potential is and where we're thinking about expanding. Also, in Vietnamese, of course, that's a unique program that we have at Falls Church. We were the first to do it in the state. Did you say there's a second one in the state now? Did somebody?
No, not in the state, but we're one of the few in the nation that have that.
Oh, and one of the few in the nation, yes. And unique, I think, and still in the state of Virginia.
Yeah, definitely.
So if you could tell us just briefly, again, when we have the work session, you know, how that's going, if, if the numbers are up, if we think that we're gonna be able to roll it out. The plan was to do it one year at a time until we have all four. So I would, I would appreciate getting just a brief update on where that is. Cyber program sound marvelous. Again, I'd love to know where the, where the 10 middle schools are that we're, we're looking at.
Okay.
And lastly, I would say, and this gets into the nitty-gritty, but on the, I was looking at some of the PISA, and I realize we, it's not, you know, we have the latest coming in.
August.
In August. But I, I find some of the socioeconomic curious, so I would be interested. I think maybe that's something where maybe I just need to sit down with you one-on-one to understand how, how their socioeconomics are.
How it's defined.
Are judged, because, you know, there, there do seem to be a few quirks in there. So.
It's not defined as free and reduced lunch. We could talk more about that.
Okay. And I do have one more go-back, and I would just remind my colleagues to turn their lights off when they're done, so that then when you have a go-back, I will be able to, to see you. So Ms. Palchek.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Couple quick other things. And one of them, a little bit, you know, response, and I actually agree with some of what Ms. Schultz was saying, is really making sure we're looking at what's working. I've also been curious about this report that's just come out. And in a way, that's why I really support our need for this position, to look at equity and innovation, because I think we do need to make sure what we're doing and what's being done out there is what's most effective. To that, I've been wondering, I know zero to three has been the new kind of thing out there. So I don't know if we've done research or if anyone has looked at investments in that area, and if this is something Skip is considering, you know, because that does seem to be kind of a, maybe the county wants to invest in that. Also, parent leadership is really important to me, and I, and I've spoken to people doing this work in Maryland and Alexandria and other parts of the county, not county, the region. So would love to, would love to know a little bit more if we have information on that. And finally, a quick question to what Ms. McLaughlin was asking. I know in my neighborhood, there are some students who are planning to do the two-to-four year college bridge. I don't know if that's a large percentage of our students going into two-year colleges. I don't know if we've tracked or asked that, or if we want to consider that in the future, and if we're able to follow up and see if that happens.
So to answer your questions about the zero-three, we'll hear more about that as we talk to you about the work that's being done with the county and the early childhood. They've looked at some things, some considerations, and you'll hear a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you. And I do, and I think to the point of what Ms. Schultz was saying is, I think, you know, maybe there are things we're doing that are working really well, and maybe there are ways that we can expand some of our programming that maybe is a little more cost-effective, that can reach more of our students and families. So I think that was, be something that I do hope when we get there, that this new Director of Equity and Innovation can help us look at as well. So thank you so much.
And just in closing, as we, as you review the narrative and all the information in there, and it was a little bit on the line what Ms. Schultz was asking about one of her questions, please look at the metrics and see if they're not helpful, or if you'd like to tweak them, so that you can have the conversation as a board to let us know. Again, we reported what was in the strategic plan, but if there are changes you'd like to see to some of those metrics that would better help, get at some of the questions you're asking, then we would love to hear that as staff, so that we can better prepare the data for you. Again, we tried to do it to what was in the strategic plan, and we know some of it is limiting, but we also know there was a lot of good information. So I appreciate the comments, but that, it's only the second year we've done this, so it's time to improve, and that would be very, very beneficial, Ms. McLaughlin. Now, we've talked about this a lot, right? By the right data, we giving it to you. So please, we would appreciate that.
Dr. Duran, I'm afraid we're not gonna let you go quite yet.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to stay here.
We have two more people. You must spark some, spark some thoughts. So, Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
We have.
So Ms. Palchek made a very interesting statement and inquiry about the zero-to-three space. As many people know, I actually lived in Europe when my children were first born, and it was required for every child in Belgium to start school at age two. And so when you're looking at metrics, it might be interesting for you to look at some of that, that experience, because what I understood at the time, and I will tell you, I was a little stunned at the concept that I was taking my two-year-old off to school, was that the reason they started it too was because then every child started on pretty much the same level playing field. And so I don't know if you have any data from Europe on that, but it would, it might be interesting to inform that discussion in light of what Ms. Palchek had to say.
Okay, we could look at that if we, I'm not sure if the school readiness folks from the collaboration have looked at the Europe data, but we can, they'll certainly share what we have looked at and what other opportunities we can to share with you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Dr. Duran, when I asked you about the cohort and when it started, I.
The UVA?
The UVA one?
Yes.
There was another, and I, and maybe we can talk offline about this, but I wanted to mention, there was another cohort we were studying, and I'm trying to remember, maybe Dr. Presidia or Ms. Burke remember, because I, you know, you've been with us just a year.
Here.
But there, it was perhaps when the Secretary of Education came, and we were talking about that, and we talked to a school, and it was supposed to be a cohort we were following. Maybe, like I said, I'm seeing that you're not, and maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but there was definitely a promotion, there was an event, and it was another cohort. Sloan, you're shaking your head, you're, you're remembering something.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get more information at the work session, but there was another cohort, and I'm not exactly sure where that data point went. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Duran. We'll look forward to more conversation in March. So next, we turn to the confirmation of, we were gonna skip over Student Representative Matters, because Ms. Chu is not here tonight. Confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include actions taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, we'll make several motion, well, a motion to confirm the recommended action. And I call on Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
I move to, hold on a second. That's not it. It's two. I move that a recommendation to revoke the Virginia teaching license of the teacher identified in closed meeting be forwarded to the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hand. Hines, Palchek, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, and McElveen. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Wilson and Darnett Kofax. That motion passes. We turn to item 4.02, FY 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program. I call on Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. I, I move that the School Board approve the FY 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Briefly, just really want to thank Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, Dr. Holub, and their team for their continued work on our capital improvement program. They're continually improving their ability to, to track students and see where we are headed by looking at birth decay and their dashboard. They have also made just a few tweaks this year, adding schools that will need additional, additions in order to accommodate their students. And I'm also pleased, as I'm sure you are, Ms. Evans, that Falls Church High School is listed on the 2017 bond. I know that is long awaited for, and hope we are able to keep on schedule with that. So with that, just really, I know they do an incredible job day in and day out. They joined me at a meeting last night in a community, so really are, am so grateful of all the work they do, and including the maps, which I love, to help us look at our schools and our capacity. So with that, I hope that my colleagues will join me in supporting the CIP for the next five years.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I will echo Ms. Palchek's comments about the dream team in the Facilities Department that has put together the CIP. It has evolved over the past several years and has become very responsive to input, not only from the School Board, but from the community. And it has become a living document that reflects not only the priorities of the School Board, but I think of the community as a whole, and is a great tool for identifying both opportunities to better serve our students through facilities, but also to kind of set a framework of when we need to start talking about how to best provide capacity and programming at each of our schools. So it really is a great document, and I am pleased to support Ms. Palchek's motion, but more importantly, I'm pleased to thank Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, Ms. Holub, or Dr. Holub, and all of the staff in that department for the excellent hard work that you all do, day in and day out, not only for the CIP, but in actually executing the CIP.
Mrs. Schultz?
So, Mr. Plattenberg, hi. So you know how on a report card, there's a place for what you're getting graded on and what your grade is, and then there's the teacher notes off to the side, place for comment? So we had a Monday work session, for, for those who are watching now or after the fact, this past Monday, where we had some really comprehensive discussion about what's in the capital improvement plan and how data is presented over time. And anybody who is either a constituent of mine or is aware of my interest in the capital needs and the capital planning, both short-term and long-term, in not only my district but in the county, know that I talk about data and data in context. So this is my note for off to the side of the report card, is that there's been tremendous growth, there's been tremendous dedication by the facility staff to improve the transparency of the, the numbers in terms of our projections, and an attempt to connect the data with real children through things, innovative things like geo-coding. What still remains is, for me, is showing our work. And in any one of our, you know, classrooms in 196 schools, students would be expected to show their work. And I continue to look forward to working with you. I know Ms. McLaughlin and I have a meeting set up, I think, in about a week or so with some of the facility staff, to talk about showing work over time, because it's one thing to say that we project that students are going to be, this many students are coming in two years or five years, for the overall division, or for a pyramid, or for a school, or for a neighborhood. It's something else altogether that in two or three years, we look at the number of students and we show what we thought was gonna come, and we show our work and how accurate we were. And I think that's the space where we still need to do some work for the overall health of the, the division. Because what that does, and I think it was about, and some of our more seasoned colleagues might remember, I think it was about five years ago, when I said, if you don't have the numbers right, everything else, nothing else matters. Because everything else after the numbers, you know, whether it's desks, books, buses, teachers, it doesn't matter. But if we don't get those numbers right, at some point, whether it's a school boundary change, whether it's a boundary light change, whether it's a wholesale boundary change, whether it's having to place programs, look for space like special education needs, and there's no elbow room, or, or Ms. Darnett Kofax has some unique challenges with some dwindling populations, all of that stems from how accurate we are with our projections, not from now until this coming September, but in three years, is what we're saying in this CIP, does that prove accurate? In two years, in five years? Because we can't move as a board, we can't make policy decisions, we can't work on private public partnerships, we can't work with board supervisors. To fix something now that shows up in September, we have to be planning out. And so I continue to look forward to working with the facility staff. This is sort of, you know, each of us have sort of passion buckets. I have a lot of them, but this is definitely, this is definitely one. And I appreciate your, your staff, who's been incredibly professional, incredibly innovative on this, but there's work yet to be done. So this is the opportunity for continued quality improvement, and, and I appreciate your work thus far.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, I too would like to thank staff for, I think, the excellent work that you have done on this, and as Ms. Schultz indicated, the geo-coding and, and our efforts to try to get to the most granular level possible to understand how many kids are coming. However, we still cannot predict all of human behavior. Parents decide where they're going to live, how many children they're going to have. So it is always, we do the very best that we can. I also appreciate the dashboards and all the various other information that is in the CIP and on the website. That gives a great deal of detailed information. I also, the fact that the mindset is, again, trying to understand at the most local level what we think is going to happen, and continually asking people at the local level, keeping our ear to the ground. So thank you very much, the wealth of information. I am pleased that Falls Church High School is online, finally. And, but we have challenges, again. There is redevelopment in the county, trying to understand that, trying to understand the impact. As the county wants to increase the economic sector, increase jobs, that also means probably increased people, and knowing where they're going to be and how that's going to work. But certainly, a strong school system that can provide the resources to our citizenry, we obviously then add to the economic health of the county, so we partner. So thank you very much. Excellent information, and we definitely have increased the depth and breadth of the information, so it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Just another kudo from me. I think I appreciate Mr. Plattenberg, what you and your team do. You're always there, you're always available to have meetings, one-on-one, two-on-two, as far as when board, you know, board members from close by districts want to meet with you and talk about the challenges there. That's greatly appreciated. And as my colleagues have shared, the information that's on the dashboard, the information that's out there, and just wanted to be the first to tell you that today in a, how, planning about budget, we were talking about ways to better align the county and school capital improvement programs. So that, you know, just when you think you got it, you know, there's just a little bit more work on the horizon. So we are looking forward to, you know, seeing that, working together, and again, just appreciate your work and the continued improvements to this plan, and the continued ability to answer questions in a timely manner. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I will not only join the praising train and the good work you guys have done, but more importantly, I think it's, it's very important that we, as a board, help raise public awareness of what this document is and how important it is as a community to really understand what it's telling us. And when, we live in one of the largest jurisdictions in the country, with over a million people and very large geographic jurisdiction, we have very serious challenges before us in terms of growth. And so I do hope that as the public. And so I do hope that as the public watches our board meetings and tries to become more aware of perhaps capital improvement issues that aren't simply in their own backyard, but do affect this school system as a whole and do affect the county as a whole. And the more informed our public will be, the more we can have a shared dialogue with not just school officials, but also with our county board of supervisors. And as our board has come to know and appreciate, down towards Mount Vernon area is seeing tremendous amount of growth. And it involves not just our schools, but overall housing development. And I really do want to make sure that we, as elected officials on the school board, help raise the community awareness on this. It's not just for Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders or Ms. Darnett Kovacs, where they might see growth over in that area, but it, it impacts all of us in one way or the other. And so in my meetings with you and the ever-accomplished Kevin Sneed, your Robin to your Batman, I, I really admire the challenges that you and your department face. It's massive. And my one district out of nine magistrate districts, there's a lot to try to do. And I want to thank you personally for your interest in the Braddock District issues, because we do have some changes in, in population and trying to make sure that, again, we have the best facilities possible and that students can have the best programming available within the building space we have. It all matters. So, kudos to the great work you guys have done.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very happy to support the CIP, but I want to thank my colleagues who were at the work session on Monday for accepting my request to schedule a work session to have a, some in-depth discussion about what do we do with more than 800 trailers we are still using for instruction in Fairfax County? And as someone who has been living in Fairfax County for many years, and as someone who has been serving on the board for many years, that if I need to pick one thing that I'm not quite proud of, our school system is number of trailers that we, we are using, and how the number has been growing ever since I began serving on the board. You can see that toward the end of CIP is a report that came to us from staff, but that's about a year old, but we have not had really opportunity to go through and have a discussion and hopefully come up with some sort of really concrete plans to remove, you know, those trailers from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Seeing no other lights on, I will add to what my colleagues have said about the excellent work that Jeff Plattenberg, Kevin Sneed, and the entire facilities staff has done. This is just excellent work, it gets better every year, and it's very much appreciated, the level of detail. For, for us, for Ms. Palchek and myself, I think this is a, this is a red-letter day. We, with Falls Church going on the bond, Mr. Plattenberg, I hope you'll, you'll join me in assuring the Falls Church High School community that they are on the bond this year. We don't have a full list yet, but that is correct. He's nodding his head, so thank you. So Falls Church, we're finally on the bond for planning. So that, that's going to be a milestone for us, and I appreciate very much the, the work that's gone into all of this. I did want to make one other comment, because I've gotten some emails about this, the options for the AAP centers. And I just wanted to make clear, while facility staff has put options in there, that this doesn't indicate that the decisions have been made about specific changes to AAP centers. While there's an option to make some changes, that would require a lot of conversation with the community, with, and we do have a concern about making sure that we have large enough numbers, a strong cohort in all of our centers. So that would certainly be down the road. I don't want anyone to feel that this document means that we, we have made a decision on that. That's, that's one option that we've been presented by, by, by staff. And with that, seeing no other hands or lights, I will take the vote on the motion moved by Ms. Palchek and seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders, that the school board approve the FY 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that vote is unanimous. The motion passes. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the January 12, 2017 regular school board meeting. 5.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, award the contract for the asphalt milling and paving at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Tibbs Paving, Inc., in the amount of $330,917, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award the contract for the asphalt milling and paving at Centerville High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Arthur Construction, Inc., in the amount of $385,623.50, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, award the contract for the asphalt milling and paving at Madison High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Arthur Contract, Inc., in the amount of $280,250, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.06, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Fairfax Villa Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Boland Train Services, Inc., in the amount of $297,062, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.07, confirm the separations for the period beginning December 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016. 5.08, confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning October 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016. And with that, if there is no objection, the consent agenda will be approved. Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. We turn to item six, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Moseby Woods Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, confirm the appointment of a citizen member to the audit committee. 6.03, authorize the superintendent of schools or his designee to sign all documents associated with the sale of the house on Lot 8, 7,000 Springfield Court, Springfield, Virginia, 22150 of Spring Village Estates. 6.04, award a contract for Moseby Wood Elementary School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, authorize staff to issue a notice of award to multiple contractors for relocation services for portable classroom trailers, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 6.06, direct the ERFC Board of Trustees to initiate the process to implement the ERFC Plan Modifications as detailed in the agenda item. 6.07, approve the strategic plan, Goal One, Student Success Strategies 3 and 4, as detailed in the agenda item. And now, next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements tonight. Edison High School students are building a living wall to grow crops indoors using an aquaponic system and designing microscopes to find pathogens as part of the Global STEM Challenges Program. The program's funded in part through a Virginia Department of Education High School Program Innovation Planning Grant. Students enrolled in the three-year program are part of a smaller learning community within Edison High School. The program integrates science, math, technology, and engineering. The program shows students that what they are learning in the classroom can be applied in the real world. All of the students' work is connected to the National Academy of Engineering Grand Challenges, Grand Challenges. Some of the world's leading engineering experts have classified the Grand Challenges as obstacles that our next generation must overcome to improve the quality of life on Earth. With successful completion of the program, 12th grade students will be able to choose advanced coursework in specific fields or pursue an IB diploma. We're very proud of the program established at Edison and are thankful for the staff that have helped lead that work and get that program underway. We'd like to thank the Apple Federal Credit Union for awarding Apple Impact Grants to five FCPS schools and six FCPS teachers. These grants are awarded to schools and teachers that develop innovative activities and programming that support the Virginia Standards of Learning and the FCPS Portrait of a Graduate. Through the ongoing generosity of the Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation, five $5,000 school-level grants were awarded, and six teacher-level grants were awarded for amounts of up to $2,000 each, a great partnership that continues with Apple Federal Credit Union. I'd like to take this time to share that we lost a true education champion earlier this month with the passing of Roger Vanderheij. Roger was a friend and a valued colleague to many of us here in FCPS. He was most recently principal at Whitman Middle School, and prior to that, the principal for 12 years at Spring Hill Elementary School in McLean. To say that Roger was larger-than-life is an understatement. He always flashed a big smile, shared a joke and a laugh with everyone, and was an incredibly talented educator with nearly 40 years of experience, including serving as a principal overseas in Belgium, Saudi Arabia, Greece, Chile, and Africa. Most importantly, Roger was a devoted family man. He was dedicated to his wife, Cecilia, who's the principal of Belvedere Elementary School here in FCPS, and his two sons, Nick and Alex, who are both FCPS graduates. Roger will be sorely missed. We ask that you please continue to keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. That concludes my comments this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. I know we all share in wanting to send our thoughts and prayers to the Vanderhys. We next go to Board Committee Reports, and I call on Ms. Darnett Kovacs for a report on the Skip Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Evans. The Skip, the Full Skip Committee did not meet in January, but the Executive Committee did, and at that time, we had talked about a few things that I will be sharing, Ms. McLaughlin and I will be sharing more with you in the February work session that you have added. A couple of things that we will be talking about are basically some of the things we talked about tonight, access, you know, the skip priorities right now. The, the top five, I guess, are access to quality early childhood education, using schools with wraparound services and using them as community hubs, partnering with business communities and mentorships, working on ways to disrupt multigenerational poverty. And that's just to name half of the objectives. It's, I, I'm really excited about what Skip is doing. We're blue-skying some initiatives, but there have to be ways, we talk about, for funding some of these initiatives, and we will be receiving, the Full Skip Committee will be receiving a report in their meeting in, in February, in, in a, next week, I believe it is, and talking about how other cities work with and partner with businesses and communities to, to fund these initiatives that are so very important initiatives that were talked about in the Goal One report. But again, we will have a work session, and there'll be opportunities to share more, and you'll have opportunities to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a report on the Governance Committee.
So, as the board is aware, at our most recent work session, we brought forward recommendations to the board on changes to our Strategic Governance Manual that relate to the role of meeting managers during school board work sessions. And very pleased that we were able to get those changes put through and move on with the other business in front of the Governance Committee. We also discussed the school board member individual advocacy letters on matters where the board has not necessarily taken an official position, and board members would like to speak to those issues, whether on individual board letterhead or on the board letterhead itself, and just some recommended guidelines that will create sort of best practice among the 12 of us. We also discussed the upcoming February retreat. The school board does that semi-annually, and in light of the very busy schedule that the board has in front of it with the superintendent search, it was determined that we would shorten the day-and-a-half retreat and simply have a Friday evening meal where the board could spend some time on board relationships as we embark on one of the most serious and important actions that we do, which is finding a great leader for our school system. And I did want to just make my colleagues aware that we didn't have the time to be able to then address the progress of where the board is on its, the Governance Committee's work on the corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy. But I did want to just let you all know that in advance of when we can bring this to you at an upcoming work session, I'll send you some documents that I think will be helpful that we had posted, which had to do with the Fairfax County Park Authority's recent policy in this very area. I think it reads very well and will be something helpful for board members as we continue to try and finalize a policy for our school system. And in addition, Loudoun County Public Schools put one in place in 2012. So I think providing you with that framework of what Loudoun County has, those are things that, sending it to you and giving you a chance to kind of really look at it with enough time, because it's really hard in these work sessions with all the documents we have to try and read all of that in, in one large chunk. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up that I'll, I'll be sending you some of that information far more in advance than usual, just so that you have it. And these are documents that were publicly posted so the board, I mean, the public can also see them as well, what I'm sending to the board.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I call on Mr. McElveen for a report from the Public Engagement Committee.
We had a very brief meeting of the, of PEC this past Monday, the main topic of which was the education summit, which you will recall, we initially canceled for this year, and then we decided as a board to reexamine with the arrival of a new superintendent. So the recommendation of PEC is to move forward with that option for early October, and we will, based on the new superintendent and whatever's going on in the district, then craft any ancillary sessions based, based on that. And just a reminder to board members, we have only received three responses to the survey we sent out about communications issues. So please get those back in as soon as possible so we can address them. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. McElveen. We've obviously been very busy, because we now have a report from Ms. Hines on the Audit Committee.
I'm so sorry, Mr. McElveen, I promise. Yes, Audit Committee. At the Audit Committee's January 25 meeting last night, the Audit Committee received a business process turnover audit. The committee also approved for referral to the full board, the auditor general job description, and a timeline for the hiring process for the auditor general. And the committee also approved for referral to the full board, the And the committee also approved for referral to the full board, the Revised Audit Charter, that's the policy governing the Office of the Auditor General. The committee also welcomed Michael Mateo, a new auditor in the Office of the Auditor General. We also requested that assistant principals in the school system all receive training in management of building finance practices, even if they're not doing that currently. It's a good idea for anyone who's an administrator in a building to have that training. We also requested a change in FCPS regulations to prohibit building staff, school-building staff who manage school finances from also managing other voluntary funds like Sunshine Funds, just to keep those things separate. And finally, we want to thank everyone who applied to serve as a community member on the Audit Committee. We have two community members on our Audit Committee, and we have an opening right now. We had 25 applications from the community. Very grateful for all the people who are interested in helping the school system in that, in that regard. We will hold some interviews in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be back in touch with everyone who applied.
Thank you. And we don't have a report on the forum, because we had to cancel that tonight. We'll have, the topic that was scheduled will be scheduled for our next forum. And with that, we turn to Board Matters, Ms. Hines.
I will pass. Thank you.
Ms. Palczek.
Yes, just want to remind people that we will be having our budget hearings next week, so please come out and join us and share your thoughts on the FY '18 budget. Have a good evening.
Ms. Hop?
Thank you. I did want to take a moment to just thank the McLean parents for coming out and the multiple emails I received. And as a board member, I was disappointed that the motion was pulled, especially given that there were amendments on the table that would have allowed for us to delay the motion itself and at the same time allow the public conversation and include stakeholders in that conversation. I do look forward to the policy discussion and the subsequent decisions, including the public engagement and stakeholder input, so thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
I want to congratulate one of my executive principals, formerly known as Mr. Eric Brent, for successfully defending his doctoral thesis, and now is Dr. Eric Brent. And so it's wonderful to have lifelong educators as the administrators of our lifelong educators. I want to particularly acknowledge a special event that happened, and I'm a little bit sad that I didn't know about it in advance, but at West Springfield High School. And the reason I want to acknowledge it is not only do, was there a shout-out to Principal Mukai, but also to Coach Eldridge. And they had a special team-building event called You Matter with students after school, and they acknowledged students that they've lost, talked about suicide prevention, and how to particularly engage students and parents in the community. I understand that this is an after-school activity and was standing room only, and was just incredibly well-received. And so I'm very grateful to the PTSA at West Springfield and the entire Spartan community that could hold a special event like that. Thank you, Dr. Lockard, for bringing up Roger Vanderheij. His wife was an educator with whom I had done many student town halls in one of my high schools. We had actually just recently had an event where we featured our stellar principals, and I spent time after the meeting talking with him about educating on five continents, and really was a shining light that was lost for our community. And our thoughts and prayers definitely go to his family, who I stood by many wrestling mats and spoke with, with family. I do want to talk about two things that happened tonight. One gives me great pause to hear talk about a board that's facing tens of millions of dollars in budget shortfalls and struggling sometimes to find a narrative on what meaningful education is and driving towards student achievement, and we start talking about zero to three. There is a gut check that goes along with that that may not be shared with all the people at this table, but there is in the greater community, when we talk about the government becoming responsible for educating children from zero to three. And I want the public to think very carefully when that starts seeping into the narrative that, you know, we have somehow a responsibility as the government to prepare your children. And I don't like the sound of that. I think it's ominous. I don't think that's the government's role, and I think that the focus on healthy families and raising their children and recognizing parents as the primary educators of their own children has to be more in the vernacular. And the last thing that I want to speak to briefly, I do feel for the McLean community that was expecting a vote tonight. The reason why there isn't a vote is not particularly clear to me, other than the fact that the greatest part of concern is around transparency. And we manage $3 billion of your taxpayer dollars. These are your schools. This is your money. We are your public servants, and when there is a lack of clarity in decision-making processes, that should always concern the community, and we will endeavor to make sure that any decision has much more clarity than maybe this one has had thus far. For example, one of the speakers spoke tonight that this has been going on since the spring of 2015. That's the first time I've heard that. So I look forward to the board working through what has been its goal since last summer, which is developing a comprehensive division-wide policy on naming rights for facilities or portions of facilities, and that it is done in a clear, communicative, collaborative fashion so that not one school, but all of our schools have the opportunity to do this. This has been something that I've been very interested in, as have some of the supervisors, and I do think when you're talking about budget shortfalls, having collaborative public-private partnerships with companies like FH Fur, who's wonderfully come to the table, both in McLean and elsewhere, need to happen, but need to happen with the greatest degree of sunshine.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. Dr. Lockard, thank you for mentioning and highlighting the great loss that the system had with the loss of Roger Vanderheij. He was a larger-than-life personality and a leader in the academic world, but he is an educational leader, but he was an inspiring leader for our students, for the teams that he built on multiple continents in schools, and also for those of us that were blessed to have him contribute time in our communities. And so we will be forever thankful to his wife Cecilia and his boys for sharing him with us, and just know that he will continue to live on in the lives that he touched, because he certainly made an indelible mark on them. Now, on some other matters that are, seem almost trivial in light of the great loss of losing Roger, I did want to do some thank-yous and also a recognition. I'll start with the recognition. The Board of Supervisors on Tuesday followed up on the action that we took at our last board meeting for acknowledging or recognizing January 2017 as the Human Trafficking Month, but they do something slightly different. They also recognize a leader in the community who is leading on this issue, and they recognized one of Fairfax County Public Schools' own teachers. Jessica Itayem, a sixth-grade science teacher at Poe Middle School, was recognized for her work in inspiring a high-risk population of girls by starting an after-school club called Poe Sisters, which have made human trafficking education and prevention their big issue this year. And so this is a wonderful example of how our teachers throughout the system go the extra mile in inspiring our students and educating beyond just the curriculum. I would also like to thank the parents that have come out to the town hall meetings that I held in, at Saratoga Elementary, as well as Mount Vernon High School. It was a great turnout. We had some robust dialogue, not only about budget, but equity in programming and the needs of those unique communities. And then I had a wonderful opportunity to visit the Governor's Health Sciences Academy at West Potomac High School. I visited with the growth officer from Enova Mount Vernon Hospital, and he was absolutely amazed. As a trained physical therapist, he said, you know, the work that our students are doing in this area in developing skills are things that he didn't experience until he was in graduate school. And so it highlighted what a great program that is, and really creates opportunities for our students to gain skills in those careers that are going to be high-growth careers. And I would encourage parents to talk to their kids about the opportunities that we have available in these academies. For example, at West Potomac, they can get skills in dental hygiene, occupational and physical therapy, healthcare management, as well as farm tech, and much more. And so I am grateful to the team of administrators and teachers that make that such a successful and inspiring place to be. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. The Spring Hill Elementary School newsletter has a wonderful section on Roger Vanderheij. Roger served for many years as the principal at Spring Hill, so I urge people to take a look at it. It is a photo montage that certainly shows the spirit, the dedication, the liveliness, the amazing character that Roger Vanderheij was. We are all very grateful for his service to our children, our families. He is one of the finest educators I have worked with and that I have served. He was a kind of a person that not only filled a room, he filled a school. He will be sorely, sorely missed. Thank you for kind words, Dr. Lockard. Tomorrow, I will be at Herndon High School. The, I am very pleased to have been included on the Student Services Advisory Committee for both Herndon and McLean. Both these schools' parents and educators work very, very hard to reach out and make sure that they are serving every single one of their students well. I congratulate both of these schools for their dedication. I look forward to the continued discussion of our policy regarding sponsorship and the naming policy. We certainly do not want to turn away generous contributions from businesses. I know McLean was the first school to attempt to put together a school sponsorship naming proposal based on the current policy, but I know my colleagues want to continue the discussion, and so we will. I do think we have to help McLean. They are in a bit of a corner. So I look forward to the continued discussion and see what we can come up with. I think our business communities are generous, and I think there are opportunities for all of our schools to take greater advantage of their generosity. So I thank FH Fur for coming forward in their offer of help, and I do look forward to continuing to talk about how we're going to help McLean, because they really do need help. They're in a tough corner. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
I just want to, I just want to wish my colleagues Happy New Year on lunar, based upon lunar calendar. The coming Saturday is January 1.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I know it's late. I have great sympathy for not only staff, but some of my very weary colleagues who I think have early morning hours, or in the case of one of our colleagues, round the clock, sleep-wake cycles going on with young little ones. So very quickly, I did want to let my colleagues know that after lots of discussion over the years, the Successful Children Youth Policy Team has now created a subcommittee on community schools, and I volunteered to serve in that conversation. Dr. Duran is going to be joining me and in part of that discussion, Dr. Larry Vossi and others. But it's really, in my mind, going to help us look at not only what services we currently have within the school division, some of which are very well-respected nationally for what we're doing, but then also looking at other divisions around the country that have these community schools with wraparound supports and services, how we might build on what Fairfax County is doing, and really continue to meet the needs of our growing diverse population. So I was really encouraged by that, that phone conference that we had. In terms of what's going on in Braddock District, just briefly, I did want to share with my colleagues that I was so thankful that in my recent coffee with my Braddock District PTA leaders, some interesting things came through, topics that we've been, we've had roaming around in terms of board member interest. FLE came up. There was a lot of conversation about delivery of curriculum, how we do that, particularly at the elementary school level, wanting a better understanding about, you know, the depth of some of the terminology we go into, and so it really was helpful to me as a board member, who, quite frankly, when I went through public school, I think I had a day of FLE, and that was the extent of my entire FLE experience in public schools. So it's, it's changed a lot, and so I really appreciated them bringing that. The website, they brought a lot of input in what it's like as a parent who visits our website infrequently, not like our employees who become more familiar with it, so they gave me some good feedback about what it's like trying to navigate it, and I look forward to sharing that with PEC and our colleagues on the board. And then the other thing that they, they really touched on was the issue of homework, you know, wanting it, like all of us do, to focus on quality and to maybe look at the challenges of quantity. And so it was, again, very helpful getting that input directly from, from our PTA leaders. I will be having office hours tomorrow, Friday, from 9:30 to 11:30 at Supervisor Cook's Braddock District Office. It will be interesting, because our Monday's discussion about potential board, potential budget reductions and where we might, you know, consider those certainly caught the attention of the community, and so people are wanting to come out and make sure that I understand that some of the things that were discussed really shouldn't be on, on the chopping block, and of course, I need to reassure them that that was just a very cursory initial conversation. So it'll be interesting dialogue tomorrow. One PTA actually sent a note out to their entire community advertising my, my office hours tomorrow, so I look forward to seeing that community and, and strong numbers. And then finally, I would just have an appeal to Chair and Vice Chair, that if we could maybe figure out what is a reasonable way to get Virginia General Assembly updates, I know that, you know, right now, a lot of things are in the various committees, but I'm hearing from community advocates sort of piecemeal information that relates to K-12 instruction, and so I was just thinking that if Michael Malloy, you know, what's reasonable for him, but I really think we would benefit from getting some updates, because there's a lot of things going on right now, and as a board member, I, I would like to be helpful to furthering the good work that's going on down there, and if we need to lend our voice with our various leaders as they look at some of the more detailed bills and proposals before them. And other than that, very grateful that I had the opportunity, in even just a few instances, to meet Principal Vanderheij. As Ms. Strauss and others have talked about, the man could light up a room, and his passion and his energy was so infectious, and I can only hope that we can carry the spirit of Roger Vanderheij for all of us who had an opportunity to meet him and enjoy the love he had for education and carry that forward.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to say to all of my colleagues here on the board, if you're celebrating Chinese New Year on Saturday... celebrating Chinese New Year on Saturday, please don't do so with --
It's not just a Chinese New Year, it's a lunar new year. That includes Koreans and Japanese, Vietnamese.
No offense intended, Mr. Moon. I hope you're celebrating, though, along with other board members, and I know my family with my own Chinese daughter will be celebrating Chinese New Year. Also, a bit of encouragement to students and teachers. I think next week we get to the end of the second quarter, so we'll be all heading downhill from there. So congratulations on almost getting to the halfway point. I think this is a momentous time for my own high school junior, who's going to be very happy to be on the backside of junior year. Lastly, I am planning to be heading out to schools so soon, hoping to get out to the middle schools, actually, over the next couple of weeks. So I look forward to seeing principals at the various middle schools in the Sully District. Thank you.
Ms. Derna-Kopeck?
My sincerest sympathy and wishes for healing also go out to the family of Roger Vanderheij and the Whitman Middle School community. Always smiling, always positive, always moving things forward. That's how I personally remember Roger. He will truly be missed, and I am grateful to have had the opportunity to work with him. Budget hearings are coming up next week. The 30th is a full -- almost full-up, I understand, and I'm not sure if we've started on the 31st, but we've got a full day scheduled. So sign up if you haven't, there's still one day left. And I will be having a coffee on January 31 at Grounded Coffee, which is located on Telegraph Road in Lee District. So Terry Dade, the Region Four -- Region Three Assistant Superintendent, will be joining me. So please come out and visit us, and we will have wonderful pastries from that coffee shop. So I look forward to seeing you there.
Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For me, and I think for many of us, this past week has been pretty difficult to digest, especially when so many of the things that we've worked for and stand for are at risk. I know many of us feel the strong desire to just crawl into our beds and hibernate. But I think now more than ever, we have to remember that there are people looking to us to stand up for them. As the stewards of the nation's 10th-largest public school system, we must be the voices of the voiceless in this time of great uncertainty. Last week, like many of you, I watched the confirmation hearing for the Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos with great interest, and I was stunned. I couldn't believe I was watching the person who would be in charge of education in the most powerful country on earth display such ignorance about our public schools. It quickly became clear that this nominee's views are antithetical to our views of both public education and civil rights here in Fairfax County. Some of the highlights of that nominee's testimony included a refusal to commit to complying with federal law requiring schools to serve and protect students with disabilities; a refusal to commit to holding all schools equally accountable, whether public, charter, or private; a refusal to commit to policies curtailing sexual assault in K-12 schools and colleges; and a refusal to commit to uphold gun-free school zones or keep guns out of schools because of, yes, the threat of grizzly bears. The testimony didn't even touch on the nominee's funding of efforts to end anti-discrimination protections and promote conversion therapy programs for LGBT youth. And on top of that, she has said that the American public education system is a dead end. Each year in Fairfax County alone, we have more than 13,000 talented graduates go off and change the world. If the secretary-designate were to speak with any of those graduates, I wonder if she would still portray public school education so negatively. For the position of Secretary of Education, DeVos is clearly unqualified based on her lack of experience, uninformed based on her lack of understanding of basic education policy, and unacceptable based on her extreme views. The inaugural address this past week laid out an even bleaker view of public education, asserting that our schools are failing despite being flush with cash and that our schools are contributing to American carnage, whatever that means. That kind of rhetoric shows just how out of touch our leaders are with reality. If they would actually step foot in one of our public schools, they would see the incredible things that our educators do every day to inspire the next generation of leaders. Of course, we all know that public education in America is not perfect. It never has been and likely never will be. Indeed, that's why all of us are here. But instead of having our schools torn apart and demoralized by such bleak rhetoric, our schools need to be strengthened with greater funding, and our educators need to be empowered with more respect. In advance of the confirmation vote of Ms. DeVos next week, I'm joining the thousands of people around the country who are calling senators to encourage them to vote no on this nominee. I would encourage anyone who believes in that timeless American dream of a strong system of universal public education to join me.
And this meeting is adjourned.